Good evening, everyone. We are ready to begin. This Planning Commission is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded and can be viewed live on City of Las Vegas TV on Cox Cable Channel 2. You can also watch the meeting live online and access other city content by visiting The proceedings will be rebroadcast on City of Las Vegas TV the Saturday after the meeting at 10:00 a.m., Monday at midnight, and the following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Taylor.
Present.
Vice Chair Kasama.
(inaudible).
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Rogan.
(inaudible).
Commissioner Walsh.
Present.
Commissioner DeSalvio.
Present.
Commissioner Munford.
Present.
Thank you, Chair Abiquam.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. And speaking of rules for tonight, we have a double agenda. So please make sure your presentations are streamlined and efficient. We usually do a two-minute limit on public comments, and we will be starting that with our first item of public comment, which is number four on the agenda. Additionally, if you do plan on speaking on an item, please come down to either side of the microphone so we can make sure we can line people up and be efficient. We would like to make sure everybody is heard, but we would really like to make sure everybody is heard before tomorrow morning. So let us move on then to public comment, number four in our agenda. During this portion of the agenda, your comments must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. As noted, the amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Come on down. Two minutes.
Respected officials of the City of Las Vegas, my name is Robert Kingston, and I have owned and resided at my primary residence at 7100 Jeanette Street in Las Vegas for about 29 years now, as the second owner of the property. I have lived exclusively in the City of Las Vegas city limits since 1991. I appear before you today to oppose all of the proposed planning zoning changes and variants for Item 25-0027, a proposed development for profit by Summit Homes of Nevada LLC for the two-plus acres at the northeast corner of Donald Road and Leon Avenue that is immediately behind and west of my one-plus acre residential estate. Our neighborhood is a quiet residential estates area that is surrounded by higher-density single-family residential that are buffered from gated -- buffered from us by gated communities with access away from them and onto higher-capacity streets than our local streets, as evidenced that Donald ends just beyond Jeanette on the east and Leon on the west. Leon does not extend beyond Elkhorn on the north and Deer Springs on the south, so with the higher-density access restrictions put in place to avoid access to our neighborhood streets, our streets are quieter with less traffic and much safer for our children to play on their bikes and our residents to ride their horses and walk their dogs. All of the years that I have resided there, I'm aware that the roadways were originally put in through the dust abatement program by Clark County, so the roadway construction is somewhat substandard because of the dust abatement is not conform to the newer standards. Note that variances have previously been granted omitting streetlights, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and lower standards of roadway construction because of the lower traffic demand in our neighborhood. Simply stated, our neighborhood streets are not well-lit so that we can enjoy the night sky and void of larger traffic volumes so that we can enjoy the more rural lifestyle that we sought and bought years ago with our homes. Adding higher-density housing defeats the concept of planning altogether and goes against the previously negotiated zoning in our neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. We are at two minutes. And also, just so you know, that item is going to be held, so you can come back next month and share some more input for that item.
Okay.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Folks, if you have comments, please come stand right by the microphones so we have people loaded and ready to go.
Is this the time I address Item Number 32?
It can be.
Okay. My name is Mary Ann Goodsell, M-A-R-Y-A-N-N-G-O-O-D-S-E-L-L. I'm addressing Item 32, I believe unless the agenda has changed. Thank you for your time, and especially Commissioner Walsh, I appreciate it. I am the president of the Picoli Ranch HOA, and we are -- have submitted documentation to add a freestanding sign. Oops, right.
Actually, ma'am, I'm so sorry. Are you here -- you're the applicant for 32?
Correct.
Okay. No, please wait until public hearing, and your item will be presented, and you can go through all this.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. No sweat. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leonard Martin. I reside at 623 Harrison Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89106. I'm currently the vice president of the Historic Westside Community Association also. I come here in regards to Item 26, that sits within 5,000 feet of my residence. I think I'm here to support this item. This being a town of hospitality, the people who work in the hospitality industry would be able to purchase, buy home ownership instead of renting. Seems like all the projects that are coming up in Ward 5, the Historic Westside, are renters. This property would be in line with single-family homeownership who care about their properties, who are now senior citizens, and we want to be uprooted with tenants who don't care that much for their property. There's several reports online that tell you people who rent don't care too much about who they rent for, and by the City of Las Vegas being the renters, the owners of that new development of four-story, 22 units at H and F and Van Buren, we don't want that. We want home ownership availability to the hospitality industry that built this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Folks, if you're coming up on an item that is part of public hearing, you will have an opportunity to speak during that item. This is your opportunity to speak more broadly on the agenda, but if you do speak on an item, this is a public hearing, we do reserve the discretion to limit your comments during the hearing item. So, sir, go ahead. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is David Bray. I represent the Harbor Cove Homeowners Association. I was discussing Item Number 13. We are requesting that the variance request be removed from the one-motion-one-vote portion of the Planning Department's agenda, specifically given the procedural deficiencies related to the request zoning regulations, as well as the substantial community opposition from both individual homeowners and the association, that the matter warrants full consideration and independent discussion before the commission.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment? And remember that if you are going to be here for a public hearing item, you can speak at that time. Okay. Great. So seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak under Item 4, we will move on to Item 5 for possible action to approve the final minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of March 11, 2025. Interim Vice Chair Schlotman, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the Planning Commission minutes of the meeting on March 11, 2025.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama.
Aye.
And mine's not coming up. Commissioner Schlotman, it would be a yea vote.
Commissioner DeSalvio.
I'm a yea vote.
Okay. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you. So let's move on to our housekeeping items. We heard about Item 13. Are there any other items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Madam Chair, Nicole Eddos, for the record. The applicant is requesting to hold Item Number 20 and 21 to the June 10 Planning Commission meeting. The applicant is requesting to hold Item Number 24 to the May 13 Planning Commission meeting. The applicant is requesting to hold Item Number 35 to the May 13 Planning Commission meeting. Staff is requesting to strike Item Number 37B-25-0037-VAR1 as the application is no longer necessary. The applicant is requesting to hold Item Number 42 to the May 13 Planning Commission meeting. The applicant is requesting to hold Item Number 49 to the May 13 Planning Commission meeting. And staff is requesting to hold Item Number 57 to the May 13 Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eddos. Did you say that was Item 42?
Madam Chair, yes. Item 42 to the May 13 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a -- let's -- sorry. Does anyone wish to speak on any of these items?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Eric Beal, on behalf of JSC Symphony Park LLC, and I would like to respectfully request that Item 30 is held to the May 13 Planning Commission hearing.
I'm sorry, sir. What item was that again?
Item 30.
30. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Right. Hearing none. Vice Chair, may I have a motion on these housekeeping items?
Yes. And just for clarification, Item 30 was May 13?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to hold Items 20 and 21 to the June 10, 2025 Planning Commission hearing. Items 24, 35, 42, 49, 57, and Item Number 30 to be held to the May 13 Planning Commission hearing. And for Item Number 37B to be stricken from the agenda. And before that, we vote on this, Madam Chair, it looks like we have Ms. Lazovich.
Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm sorry, I did not hear the hold request for the lot for the gentleman that just stood up. Did he say 30?
He did say 30.
I'm the applicant. This is for Area 15. Is that?
Okay.
Oh, FBLV District. So Item Number 25-0011 VAR, applicant-owner FBLV District 2 is your item, Ms. Lazovich?
It is my item. Okay.
Sorry, I might be looking at the agenda from last month. So this is 24-0495-SUP1 for the AC Element Symphony Park Hotel.
Madam Chair, that's Item Number 25.
I'm sorry, what item is that, sir?
That's Item Number 25.
Okay. We are ready. 25. Okay. Great.
Madam Chair, I'm going to resend my motion, and I'm going to make a new motion. On Item 20 and 21, I move to hold those items until the -- in advance until the June 10, 2025 Planning Commission hearing. On Items 24, 25, 35, 42, 49, and 57, to hold those items in advance until the May 13, 2025 Planning Commission hearing, and to have 37B stricken from the agenda.
Thank you. Vice Chair, there is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama. Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carries.
And, Madam Chair, Items 7 and 10 are final action tonight unless appealed to the City Clerk in seven days. Item 8 is final action unless appealed in 10 days, and Item 9 will move on to City Council on May 21.
Thank you. Let's move on to our one-motion-one-vote items. The following are items that may be considered in one-motion-one-vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items with a staff recommendation of approval. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. So we'll read through these items that will be part of one-motion-one-vote. Item 11, 25-0069ZON1, applicant-owner Homes for Hopefuls LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request from U undeveloped R Rural Density Residential, general plan designation to RE Residence Estates on the west side of Roland Avenue approximately 1,200 feet north of Anne Road, APN 125-25-410-021, Ward 6, Bruni. Staff recommends approval. Number 12, Item Number 25-0079, SUP1, applicant Thai Massage Golden Beauty LLC, owner Charleston Heights Shopping Center LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed 1,530 square-foot massage establishment use with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a parcel zoned for residential use where 400 feet is required at 5013 Alta Drive, Ward 1, Knudson. Staff recommends approval. Item Number 13 is being pulled forward to public hearing. Item Number 14, advance, re-notification, Item Number 24-0655, MSP1, applicant-owner Silver Meadow Properties LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for an improved convenience store with car wash development on the southwest corner of Grand Teton Drive and Walla Pay Way, Ward 6, Bruni. Staff recommends approval. Number 15, advance, re-notification, 24-0670, SUP1, applicant Grocery Outlet Inc., owner WRI Charleston Commons LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed 22,584 square-foot alcohol off-premise beer/wine use at 45 North Nellis Boulevard, Ward 3, Diaz. Staff recommends approval. 16, advance, re-notification, 25-0009, ROC1, applicant Taylor Morrison, owner KL LB Buy 4 LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement request to remove condition number four from approved tentative map, 24-0345-TMP1, which states, "Sign and recorded deed restriction with language determined to be satisfactory by the city attorney, which restricts the use of the site to an age-restricted community for those persons 55 years of age or older to the full extent of the law." At the northwest corner of Lake Mead Boulevard and Park Drift Trail, Ward 2, Seaman. Staff recommends approval. Item 17, advance, re-notification, 25-0010-SUP1, applicant L Las Vegas LLC, owner Boca Park Marketplace LV LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed 1,967 square-foot alcohol on-premise full use with a 1,45 square-foot outdoor patio area at 8704 West Charleston Boulevard Suite Number 101, Ward 2, Seaman. Staff recommends approval. Number 18, advance, re-notification, 25-0014-SUP1, applicant Ellen Park, owner South Shores LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed 1,386 square-foot alcohol on-premise beer/wine use at 8540 West Lake Mead Boulevard, Suite 120, Ward 4, Allen Polinsky. Staff recommends approval. May I have a motion on the one-motion-one-vote items? Oh, sorry. I need to open this up for public comment. These items have been noticed for public comment. Is there anybody wishing to comment on the items that are on the one-motion-one-vote agenda?
And, Madam Chair, while they're coming up through you, I'm going to make an abstention on Item Number 18 as I have an ongoing business relationship with that applicant.
Okay. Thank you. Please state your name and spell it and your address for the record, sir.
My name is Jay Manning, J-A-Y-M-A-N-N-I-N-G. What was the other half? State my name and spell it and what?
And your address, please.
Oh, address. 5828 Maria Del Mar Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. I wanted to speak about the Item 11, the property on Rowland Street, the rezoning.
Okay.
We're a rural estate area over there, large properties with single-family homes, and all of the neighbors, we kind of feel the same way. We want to keep it that way. We're not looking to have that property split up and subdivided.
Okay.
And there's a group of us here that feel the same way.
All right. Who's here on Item 11? Just raise your hands. Okay. Thank you.
We would have sent in the postcards, but we literally just got them the other day, and there's no way we could have mailed in our part in time.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Tracy Elessin. I live at --
Turn on your mic, sir. Got it.
Do I have to push the button?
You're good. It's on.
My name's Tracy Elessin. I live at 5833 Roland Avenue. I also am here for Number 11. I guess my concern is more the Homes for the Hopefuls LLC. They want to change the zoning, or I'm just trying to understand what that really means that they're trying to do with the property. I live a half-acre down from it.
Madam Chair, Nicole Eddos, for the record, if I may. Their current zoning district allows for 20,000 square-foot lots. The zoning designation they're requesting now would allow them 18,000 square-foot lots, so they will still be considered half-acre lots. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the plan is to do two half-acre lots, two houses?
Okay.
Is that what she said? Sorry, my hearing.
She was saying that the current zoning designation requires a minimum of 20,000 square-foot lot. The request would still require a minimum of 18,000 square-feet lots, a difference of 2,000 per square -- 2,000 square feet per lot.
So the use -- we don't know the use, other than it's just going to be two half-acre lots.
I'm so sorry, sir. I'm not -- I can't hear you.
Madam Chair, I can hear him.
Okay.
Yes, it will still stay residential. It will stay residential. They will -- this will allow them to take that one lot, turn it into two lots, and build two homes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And I will just say, for the record, I did speak to the applicant, and the landowner and his intent, in case there are concerns, is to subdivide it to build two single-family homes to be owned and resided in by, you know, folks. It's not anything that's got a commercial purpose. It's all going to be residential.
And, Madam Chair, if I may just make one comment through you. And just for everybody that's here on Item Number 11, this is just a rezone. This isn't SDR. This isn't tentative map. So whenever they do decide to build, they'll bring a map to us, and we'll have the chance to look at where their ingress/egress is, how their site's laid out, curb, gutter, that whole work. So at that point, that would be a good time to come and take a look at it. This is just a zoning matter.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, if they're subdividing into two lots, they will not have to come back to Planning Commission. It's only when you have five lots or more that requires a tentative map. So this rezoning will allow the property owner to submit a parcel map to the city. We will then record, you know, for the two separate residential lots, and then the owners of the property, as long as they abide by the set-backs and building height for those homes, they can then obtain a building permit to build one house on each lot.
And those are for -- and those are residential homes, correct?
Yes, they are residential. They will not be allowed for commercial use.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that clarification.
I guess the main concern was the LLC, Homes for the Hopeful LLC, and I think the neighbors considered that maybe that we're going to use it for, you know, not homeless people, but people.
No.
Madam Chair, through you, from what has been explained to us by the applicant, that it was just a cheeky name they gave it because they are hoping to build their dream house. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eddos.
Okay.
That is also my understanding from speaking to the landowner applicant. Okay. Anybody else? Public hearing on any of these one-motion-one-vote items? Okay. Great. So we can go back to our motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, I'd like to make a motion on one-motion-one-vote. Items Number 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 19 -- 18 and 19, noting my abstention on Item Number 18, subject to staff's conditions.
There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Yep. Commissioner Kasama.
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Got it.
Thank you. Please post, and that motion carries.
And, Madam Chair, Items 11 and 12 will move on to City Council on May 21, and Items 14 through --
that requires a tentative map. So this rezoning will allow the property owner to submit a parcel map to the city. We will then record, you know, for the two separate residential lots. And then the owners of the property, as long as they abide by the set setbacks and building height for those homes, they can then obtain a building permit to build one house on each lot.
And those are for, and those are residential homes, correct?
Yes, they are residential. They will not be allowed for commercial use.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
I guess the main concern was the LLC Homes for the Hopeful LLC, and I think the neighbors considered that maybe that we're going to use it for, you know, not homeless people, but people.
No.
Madam Chair, through you, from what has been explained to us by the applicant, that it was just a cheeky name they gave it because they are hoping to build their dream house. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eddos. That is also my understanding from speaking to the landowner applicant. Okay. Anybody else? Public hearing on any of these one motion, one vote items? Okay, great. So can go back to our motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, I'd like to make a motion on one motion, one vote. Items number 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 19, 18 and 19, noting my abstention on item number 18, subject to staff's conditions.
There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Yep. Commissioner Kasama.
Hi.
Commissioner Rogan.
Hi.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Got it.
Thank you. Please post, and that motion carries.
And Madam Chair, items 11 and 12 will move on to city council on May 21, and items 14 through 19 are final action tonight, and let's appeal to the city clerk in 10 days.
Great, thank you. Okay, we are now going to move on to our public hearing items. We are going to go a little bit out of order tonight. We are going to start with item number 51. That is, item 25-0068, applicant City of Las Vegas, owner City of Las Vegas et al., for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at the northwest corner of Alta Drive and Falcon Lane, Ward 1 Knutson. Staff recommends approval on the land use entitlement project, subparts including 51A, 25-0068ZON1, from R1 Single Family Residential to CV Civic, APN 138-36-201-014, 51B, 25-0068SDR1, for a proposed one-story 12,800 square foot fire station development. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could please state and spell your name for the record, your address, and tell us about the project.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Rosa Cortez, City Engineer, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Liz Duncan, Architectural Project Manager, City of Las Vegas, Public Works.
Thank you for having us today to present this project. This is a much-needed project for the city's fire department in regards to meeting the response times needed for this community. I want to just, before I begin, thank our fire chief Fernando Gray and battalion chief Ryan Flood for supporting this project, for being part of the project and the design, and also PGA Architects for getting all the site plans and design documents together for us. Here we have the overall aerial of where the project is located. The existing station is at Jones and Upland, and we are proposing to build a new station at Alta and Falcon, and that's depicted in the orange circle. Here is a view of the site plan. It is east of an existing church on the northwest corner of Falcon Lane and Alta Drive. What you see on your screen is a view of the layout, the fire station layout, the four bays and the station, as well as the route of how the vehicles will be entering and exiting the station. We have driveways coming in from Alta Ingress and also off of Upland, and then the, from the bays, they will be exiting off onto Alta Drive. Here we have the landscape plan with desert-appropriate trees and shrubs around the perimeter of the site, as well as around the building. Here we have the building elevation, starting with the top. This is what you would see from the back or the north. The next one down is what you would see looking from Alta. Further down, that is what you would see from the west or from, looking from the church side. And finally, the last one is what you would see from, looking at from Falcon. Here is a 3D view, looking from Alta and roughly Falcon. A similar view, a little higher up. This is looking towards the back, I guess, of the station from Falcon. And finally, this is also looking from Alta, but the other direction. Any questions? Comments?
Thank you for the presentation. If you could just give us a moment, this item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on item number 51? Seeing none, I will close public hearing and I will pass it to the commission, starting with Commissioner Knutson. I mean, sorry, Commissioner Rogan.
Mr. Chair, would you like to make a motion?
I'm not seeing any comments here on the dais, so if you'd like to make your motion, go ahead.
Um, with regards to item 51, project number 25-0068, make a motion for approval subject to conditions.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kasama.
Hi.
Commissioner Rogan, okay. All right, that, please post, and that motion carries. Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you.
All right, next out of order, we're going to do is item number 52, which is 25-0078 SDR 1, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for proposed one-story 4,194 square foot trade school development with waivers of the title 19.09, form-based code development standards, generally located at the southeast corner of Jefferson Avenue and D Street, Ward 5 Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends approval. Good evening again. Please, oh.
Yes, Madam Chair, sorry, I was away from the dais. Item 51 will move on to city council on May 21.
I apologize for rushing through things while you were away from the dais director. Okay, may I please have the staff report? Oh, they are the staff reports. Okay, may I please have the staff report, starting with your name, spell it, and your addresses, please. Thanks.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Rosa Cortez, City of Las Vegas, City Engineer, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Sam Tolman, Architectural Project Manager for the city, 8141 Orchard Glen Avenue.
First, I'd like to give special thanks to Dr. Tammy Malich for being a supporter of the project and helping us out with this design. This is going to complete the campus over at the Historic Westside School area, and I'll show you some of the exhibits that we have. This project is going to be called the Strong Future Career Connection Center. It will be located on the, call it, south-north-east corner of Adams and D Street, although Adams doesn't go through the alignment there. And to the east of the boundary is an existing Strong Future Technology Training Center. And currently, north of these two areas, is a project under construction, which is our Westside Education and Training Center. That is a co-op project with CSN. That project will be complete this summer. So this project that we're presenting today will complete this area, this campus here. Here is the overall site plan. This project, as I mentioned, is going to complete the campus build-out, and it also supports the transition from the education and training that is already happening here in this area, and helping the students into actual jobs. Sam can talk about the details.
This is the Future Career Connection Center. It's got classroom availability, conference room availability, individual areas for staff and for those who are developing their career. It's all in combination with this. The Westside School has several facilities within it, as well as the Historic Westside Education Training Center. This is the elevation looking from the south and east. If you've, we don't have a picture of it here, but the Historic Westside Education Training Center that is under construction, we're compatible with that building to tie in, as well as other developments across the street. This is a rendering, looking from directly towards the west. And this is another rendering, looking from the north, looking southwest. And then here's the, another rendering, looking from the south.
Thank you very much for the presentation. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on item 52? Please, sir, come down, take one of the microphones, state your name, and spell it for the record, and the applicant could just step aside for a moment. Thank you. And then give us your address.
My name is William McCurdy Sr. I've been actively involved in Historic West Las Vegas. I'm very familiar with the project that's going on in that particular area because of the fact that during previous council members, I've worked to help encourage redevelopment in West Las Vegas. So I'm very happy that the City of Las Vegas is doing its part, and Commissioner Armstrong, along with Mayor Shelley Berkeley, is doing a good job by trying to keep things moving forward in that particular area, especially on D Street. D Street is a historical street in our community. If you don't remember, it used to be the Jefferson Center on that particular partial. And I'm very glad to see the CSN has partnered with the city to develop that area. And I'm very happy to know that next door, they will have another five-story building going up there that a former planning commissioner has been involved in. So I'm encouraging the commission to do the right thing by keeping West Las Vegas, and historical West Las Vegas, moving forward by approving that phase of the project.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Commissioner Weekly, if you want to state and spell your name for the record and give us your address.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you so very much for this opportunity to be here this evening. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself, Dr. Lawrence Weekly, College of Southern Nevada. Today, we are very elated to say that we are in 100% support of this partnership. Thank you so very much. Dr. Tammy Malich, I can't thank you enough and the team for making this happen. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this dates back to a time when Commissioner Munford's father had the vision of making sure that there was some form of job training in this community. And when you look at all of the development that's taking place now, we call it the WETC, Workforce Education Training Center, which is underway. Tomorrow in Carson City, up at the legislature, is Workforce Development Day. And so projects like this is being celebrated. And so thank you to the City of Las Vegas staff. Thank you also very much, Commissioners, for your support to our councilwoman. We're absolutely elated to all the visionaries, and then partnering with our Commissioner, William McCurdy II. It's just a great day for West Las Vegas. And so, Madam Chair, we thank you, and we urge you all to 100% support this item. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Folks, if you're on this item, please come up, sir, please come up to the microphone. You can come up. Yep, absolutely. He'll speak first, and then you can start speaking.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Leonard Martin, resident at 623 Harrison Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89106. The Historic Westside Community Association is in favor of these bills of training. I was looking at your offsets with the climate control rising in the City of Las Vegas. Where would the students be able to stand outside in temperatures of 118 degrees? That offset with those trees looked very slim out there. You know, I was looking at the diagram on the monitor, but we're encouraging more bills and training in the neighborhood and the community. Also, we would help this reflect on the STEM Center at the Historic Westside Grammar School, where the community can get involved, more involved in proclamating what they would like to see in this neighborhood. So we would help. In essence, all this would come together, and the next generation will form the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments, sir. Sir, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mohamed Abdullah. I'm the husband of Gwendolyn Walker. As you all know, she's been the neighborhood watch captain for the Valley View neighborhood for over 40 years. And I just want to say I'm grateful to see that you all are developing that connector for employment, and the trade school is definitely needed, and we fully support that. Just want to make sure that we account for any type of weather exchanges that we may experience, particularly with the climate change and the heat that we're expecting this summer. So please consider that before you make your decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Hello, my name is Miriam Gibson, and I'm a business owner in the Historic Westside. And I commend you for having such things like a trade school over there, because it is well-needed. You know, we need support. The business people that offer services there would like a center like that in the area to train some of the local people to work in some of the jobs that we want to bring into the community. So I could say that is very well-welcome, and thank you, and hopefully you will support this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Anybody else from the public wishing to be heard on item 52? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Is there anything else that you, that the applicant, I'll invite the applicant back up and see if you had any comments? Any further comments for us?
No, if you have any questions for us, we're ready to answer your questions.
Let me concur with staff recommendations.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Munford.
Thank you for everybody from the community coming up and showing support for this project, and thank you for City of Las Vegas. And I agree with everybody, this is a project that is important to the community. Sometimes, people in the community in that area, you know, feel that they're forgotten in the overall mix of this city. So it's a very good project, and like Commissioner Weekly said, my father was an educator, and he would love to see something like this in our community.
Are you prepared to make a motion, Commissioner?
I think.
I just got a question. I just want to know, it says trade school. I just, and anybody knows I'm for the service base as well, construction, what exactly is just going to be taught there? That's my question.
Sure. So when I showed the campus build-out photo, and I mentioned the CSN campus, what we have at CSN campus just north of here is advanced manufacturing, medical, IT, and construction. So once they learn that skill, and they're ready to go to the workforce, they will utilize this facility that we are going to be constructing to transition into the workforce.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that question. Anybody else from the commission have any questions or comments? No, okay. Commissioner Munford, are you ready to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for approval of item 52, 25-0078SDR 1. I'd like to move for approval per all conditions of the planning department.
Thank you, Commissioner. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kasama? Commissioner Rogan? Please post, and that motion carries.
And that item is final action tonight, and let's appeal to the city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go back to item number 13, abeyance re-notification, 24-0640VAR1, applicant owner Harbor Cove Properties LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow a proposed front yard wall that does not conform to Title 19.06 development standards for height at 2980 Harbor Cove Drive, Ward 4 Alan Polanski. Staff recommends approval. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, the subject site is an irregular-shaped lot that meets NRS requirements for the granting of a variance. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the requested variance. Please note additional documents of protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Can you please state and spell your name for the record? Can you please state and spell your name for the record? Give us your address, and tell us about your project.
Alan Harvey, H-A-R-V-E-Y, 29... Alan Harvey, H-A-R-V-E-Y, 2980 Harbor Cove Drive. I'm applying for a variance just to move my wall out further to the sidewalk.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to show us from the project, some pictures or anything?
Sorry, I'm just going to go through everything, sorry. I don't know how large that is, but that's the, that's the site plan here. It is one of the larger properties within Harbor Cove. The wall itself is this wall here, and I'm hoping to bring it out within 16 inches of this sidewalk here, okay? Not along the full length, just partially, just past that tree there. At the moment, that's not a very good photograph, but my wall here is one block down from this wall here, which is right on the sidewalk. That's, that's not even worth showing you, it's that safety. But if we look at an aerial view, this is the wall I have at the moment, and this is the sidewalk, okay? I am trying to bring the wall out towards the sidewalk, and if you can understand this drawing, the wall will actually then look like this, okay? So it's within 16 inches of the sidewall. This is 85 feet. I have all side yard as opposed to rear yard. The wall itself, the height, won't change. All along Harbor Cove, there are same-height walls that are on, adjacent to the sidewalk. In fact, there's even a let-in there for the biohydrant. Again, this is all along Harbor Cove Street. As you can see, all that side of the street is all wall, same height as I'm applying for next to the sidewalk. Down Bay Harbor, no, sorry, Sun Lake Drive, these walls here are actually over 10 feet Perspective, that's an 80-pound dog, just to give you a perspective of the height. Right onto the sidewalk, again, a let-in for the biohydrant. This is the wall adjacent to my property. There's a park here. This wall is right on the sidewalk, and this is where it actually turns in to inside my property. But this is over six feet high, this wall, and it is right on the sidewalk. That's it. I went to several neighbors for, basically confirmation of agreement is, that's my wording. I put that plan to them, and all of the neighbors, well, most of the neighbors obviously agreed to it. Few adjacent neighbors also signed that document. That's it, sorry.
Okay.
That's as much as I can say.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, sir. If you wanted to just step aside for a moment, this has been noticed for public hearings, so members of the public wishing to be heard on item 13, please come down, and we'll start the two-minute timer. And if you hear something from one of your other neighbors, please feel free to say ditto if it's what you were going to say, and let's try to not be repetitive. And if anybody else is here for 13, please come down, line up, so we can get rolling through public comment. So, welcome back, sir. Thank you. Please state and spell your name for the record, and give us your address.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is David Bray, it's spelled B-R-A-Y, and I am Corporate Counsel for the Harbor Cove Homeowners Association. We respectfully ask that you deny this request in its entirety, and our position rests on two fundamental points. First, that the variance request does not meet the standards outlined in NRS 278 or the Las Vegas Municipal Code, as it is not supported by the legal framework that the Nevada Supreme Court handed out in the Enterprise Citizens Action Committee versus the Clark County Board of Commissioners. And second, that the request does not comply with established procedural protocols, as evidenced by overwhelming lack of community support. Let me first begin by addressing the heart of the matter. Mr. Harvey's request for the variance does not meet the legal definition of a hardship required under the law. As the Nevada Supreme Court clarified in the enterprise case, the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate a legal, concisable hardship that justifies granting the variance. And a hardship is defined as something that significantly makes it more difficult for the property owner to not be resolved without a variance. It must involve circumstances that are unique to the property, such as economic loss, a deprivation of all beneficial use, or situations where the property cannot yield a reasonable return if used in accordance with existing zoning. Mr. Harvey's request, however, fails to meet any of this criteria. The hardship he claims is based solely on aesthetic preferences and personal convenience, such as wanting more privacy, addressing dog waste, and preventing loitering. These are not hardships as defined by Nevada law. Privacy concerns, as Mr. Harvey has expressed, can be easily addressed through less intrusive means such as privacy hedges or other landscape treatments. Dog waste and loitering are issues that Mr. Harvey, as the board president of the Harbor Cove Homeowners Association, has authority to address through enforcement of community rules. As such, these concerns do not justify a variance for a wall that exceeds permissible height lengths.
Sir, you're at two minutes. Is that everything?
Quickly, I want to address another issue, is the deviation from the protocol for obtaining approval from Harbor Cove Homeowners Association. In the application, it was submitted a ARC approval. There is evidence indicate that was submitted to the commissioners that the approval was done improperly, was incomplete, the master association has not approved it, and that it is fundamentally flawed to rely upon that, given the fact that there is significant community opposition to this wall. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. Anybody else here for item 13? Come on up and line up at the microphones, please, folks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Robert Crimmer. I live at 8109 Sunset Cove Drive for the past 10 years. I'm retired land use attorney. Tonight, I'm here as a homeowner, and I'm representing, or on behalf of 75 individual full-time residents who have submitted written objections to this variance request. It's in your record. That number's not incidental. 52 homes participated in the latest HOA election. 51 homes tonight submit objections. There's a clear indicator of deep community engagement and an overwhelming consensus among the residents that the variance must be denied. He's seeking to move an 85-foot wall directly adjacent to the sidewalk. This is a frontage wall. The examples that applicant showed you were sidewalls. We do have sidewalls along the sidewalk. We do not have a single frontage wall that goes along the sidewalk. In addition, the HOA development standards, both at the subdivision and at the master community level prohibit any kind of frontage wall in the, that doesn't comply with the setback. The HOA attorney has clearly stated that he provides no, applicant provides no credible evidence that there's anything in the configuration of the parcel that prohibits him from using his land to the full beneficial use as it's currently zoned, which is residential. He has deviated from the standard procedures. He's bypassed the subdivision. He's bypassed the master. He's gone directly to you, and he hasn't met the Title 19 hardship. In conclusion, to approve the variance would be to ignore Title 19 standards, the overwhelming voice of the residents, the foundational design principles of our neighborhood, and I would respectfully urge the Planning Commission to deny the variance request so that we don't end up with a walled-in corridor along one side of the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else? And if you're here on this item, please come stand at the microphones.
Good evening. Tracy Truman, on behalf of Alex Maldonado, who lives directly across the street from the applicant, and I would say ditto to what Mr. Crimmer and Mr. Bray have said. In addition to that, the thing that Mr. Maldonado brings is his constant, everyday view of what appears to be a construction company that's doing business across the street. It appears that the wall really is a guise for extending the yard of the applicant so that he can park more vehicles and do a larger volume of business, and we oppose that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else on item 13?
Good afternoon. My name is Alejandro Maldonado. I live right across the street from the property in question. My comment is very simple. You heard pretty much everything that needs to be said, but living across the street from Mr. Paul is like living across the street from Home Depot. Every day, something going on. You can see pictures. I have close to 500 pictures and videos of the everyday things that happen there, and I'm sure you didn't get more than a few, because that's more or less what it's supposed to be. But every day, people coming in and out, and all he wants is to move the wall so he can put a gate there and park his equipment and trucks and everything there. And I'm the only one affected, because the neighbor next door died not too long ago, and the other people on the other side, which is the only neighbors across the street, they never here. They're from Japan, I think, or something like that. So I'm the only one that is affected, so I had to, you know, make an individual effort to stop this guy from moving the wall. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anybody else for public hearing on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing, call the applicant back up to the podium. Sir, is there anything else you would like to add?
Yeah, I don't know where they're getting the idea of putting the gate in. I don't know where they've got an idea of putting trucks behind there. Do I run a construction business from my home? Actually, I'm a handyman, and I keep tools in my garage. I don't keep equipment. Yes, I put something in my truck every day, because I need tools every day. There is, as it was first brought up, when the property opposite was being worked on, people were sat underneath my trees. I found packets, candy wrappers, cans, and I'm very often cleaning up dog feces. Now, also, I've had people walk along, and they peer over the wall as it stands, saying they thought it was an extension to the park. Now, by moving that wall towards the sidewalk, keeping it the same height, I don't want to raise it up at all, okay? It appears to be five foot eight, because the land actually is on a gradient at the moment, okay? When you walk up to the wall, across the land, it's only about five feet. And that's all I want to do, is just bring the wall forward. I'm not interested in putting another gate in it. Many years ago, I put an application in to see if I could put a gate. They said no, wiped away. Yes, it is on the frontage of my property, but I do have 212 feet of frontage. I don't really have a side, because everything is on the side of my property. There is still going to be over 100 feet of frontage. Mr. Maldonado does live opposite me, opposite the front of my house and the garage. He doesn't live opposite where the wall will be built. The wall will be over in that direction. But the wall had nothing to do with what my business does. I don't understand that argument. Sorry. That's it, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to turn this back over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Kasama.
Thank you, Chair. I have a lot of feelings on both sides, and I appreciate hearing these things so much. As it stands for this thing, I think he agrees. In my... It has seemed that this thing does fit almost to the key to NRS 278 regarding, because the irregularity outside, and as our traditional planning, we are seeing things clearly to the NRS post, and with that in mind, it does meet real requirement for, does meet real requirement, no question for variance. So with that in mind, on the commission, I will make motion to approve.
Okay. Seeing no other comments from the commission, there is a motion on the floor for this item. Motion to approve item 13. Please cast your votes. Oh, are there, can, sorry, subject to all conditions? And, sir, you agree to all those conditions that are provided by staff?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Rogan?
Hi.
Commissioner Kasama? All right. Please post, and that motion carries.
And, Madam Chair, that item is final action tonight, and let's appeal to the city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move back in order to item number 22. That is abeyance, 24-0631, applicant Stone Land Holdings LLC. Owner, Clark County Vacant Series of the Cab Properties LLC. For possible action on the following land use entitlement project, requests at the northeast corner of Alexander Road and El Capitan Way. Ward for Alan Polensky. Staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement. Subparts, item 22A, abeyance 24-0631ZON1, from RE Residence Estates to R1 Single Family Residential. 22B, abeyance 24-0631VAR1, to allow private streets that do not conform to Title 19.04 complete street standards for private street requirements and street terminations other than at intersections. Item 22C, abeyance 24-0631TMP1, Alexander and El Capitan, for a proposed 19-lot, single-family residential subdivision with a waiver of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, Jonathan Boils, for the record. Staff notes the submitted tentative map has been amended from 19 lots to 12 lots. However, staff does not support the requested variances that would allow substandard street widths, street terminations, and allowing residential lots to extend into the street centerline to satisfy setback requirements in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Therefore, staff recommends denial of all entitlement requests. Please note that there is a revised staff report and new landscape plan, date stamped March 24, 2025, in your supplemental packet. Also, staff notes two additional conditions of approval must be added to tentative map The first condition states, post no outlet signs at entryway of private streets, and the second condition states, paint the curbing red and post no parking signs on the non-standard street termini. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. If you could please state your name, and give us your address, and give us an overview of the project.
Yes. Good evening. Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. The site is located just to the north of Alexander Road and on the east side of El Capitan Way. As your staff indicated, the plan has changed from what was originally submitted. The original submittal contained a request for 19 lots, and with that, there was a number of lots that were less than 10,000 square feet in size. The site is part of the Planning Area B of the interlocal agreement, and so the revision that's before the Planning Commission tonight reduces the total number of lots from 19 lots to a total number of 12 lots, and it does comply with the requirement that they all be 10,000 square feet. The subdivision will be accessed off of this street. The street that I'm pointing out is in gray right here, and then this is our turnaround. We have worked with fire during the application process, and it indicates on this, the hammerhead turnaround shown complies with the City of Las Vegas turnaround amendments. So that complies with what fire needs it to look like. In addition to that, though, to address some concerns that we have heard, we would be agreeing to those two additional conditions, which would require a no outlet sign to be posted and maintained privately, but towards the front of our private streets, so that nobody would think... the front of our private streets, so that nobody would think this was a through street. And then in addition, the second condition addressed this area where the turnaround is. The curbing around that would be painted red, and there would also be no parking signs there to ensure that it was clear for any type of turnaround that needed to occur in that area. We are providing a 10-foot pathway along Alexander Road. We do have a waiver to allow five feet of landscaping. It's actually detached, but five feet of landscaping instead of six feet. What we did is we expanded the area of that sidewalk. Instead of being eight feet, it's 10 feet. And so because of the nature of the way this parcel sits and how we had to lay it out, that one foot actually makes a big difference if we want to try to do some single-story homes. This is a community of one and two-story homes. All the homes to the north of us are, every home in red is a two-story home. And so you can see, we've got some two stories to the north of us. And so we would like our buyers to have the option for one or two-story homes. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, we do agree to the additional conditions of approval that were read into the record by staff.
Okay. This item has been noticed for public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on item 22? Looks like we've got a couple. Ms. Lazovich, if you could just step back, that'd be great.
Good evening. My name is Robert Phillips, and I live a few streets away from this property at 8704 Monarchy Court. The builder's requesting a zoning variance to change this parcel from RE to R1, which in itself is a very drastic change. That's a change from a minimum lot size of 18,000 square feet down to 6,500. This is a drastic change and does not align with the existing neighborhood. The homes immediately to the north of this parcel sit on lots of approximately 20,000 square feet. Reducing lot sizes from 20,000 square feet all the way down to 12,000 square feet is excessive and out of character with the surrounding neighborhood. Furthermore, our neighborhood recently, or our neighborhood currently averages about 8.2 homes per five-acre parcel. This developer is proposing 12 homes on the same amount of land, five-acre parcel. That's a staggering 46% increase in housing density, population density, and the schools in our neighborhood are already overcrowded. Centennial High School is overcrowded. There's an elementary school up the street. It is overcrowded, and this is just going to add to it. Conclusion approving this variance would be, would set a troubling precedent for our neighborhood, and I strongly urge you to deny the zoning variance request. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anybody else on item 22 for public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment, and I will invite the applicant back up. Ms. Lazovich, is there anything you would like to add?
Yes, just two quick points. Just want to reiterate again that the plan that's before you tonight has all minimum 10,000 square foot lots. The original plan showed lot sizes that were reduced down to 6,500. In addition, this application doesn't have a general plan amendment associated with it, and it's noted in the staff report that the density and the zoning that we're asking for does comply with the general plan for the area. As you can see on this overhead... Thank you. As you can see on this overhead, the yellow is consistent just to the east of us with the same zoning designation that we are asking for. In addition, Alexander Road is, I believe, 100-foot wide street, and El Capitan is 80. And, but I think the most important point is that this does comply with the master plan for the area, and we are complying with the interlocal in terms of lot sizes.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lazovich. I'm going to turn it back over to the commission before I turn it over to Commissioner Kasama. Commissioner Rogan, I'm going to turn it over to you first.
Thank you, Chair. I just need to make a record that I'll be staying from this matter. The staff reported that this leg and leg within the planning area, the of the interlocal agreement between Clark County and the city. I'm an attorney for Clark County. It would be the responsibility of my office to enforce any violations of the interlocal agreement between the county and the city, and for that reason, I cannot run this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Kasama.
Thank you, Chair. I apologize. But regarding the question with that, is zoning any of the interlocal, I don't think, and brand of street? So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve this, and 24-2, so that's actually.
Okay. Commissioner is breaking up a little bit. I think there's a motion to approve this item, but let me just make sure. Any comments from the dais? Okay. So there is a motion to approve item 24-0631 and all its subparts, subject to all conditions, including the two new conditions that were just read in. And Commissioner Kasama just wanted to get that on the record since you were breaking up a little bit. So that is the motion. It's on the floor. Commissioner Kasama?
I am.
Okay, great. Please post, and that passes?
And Madam Chair, that will move on to city council on May 21st.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We are going to temporarily trail item 23, and we are going to go to item 26. This is abeyance renotation-24-0616, applicant CBLCLLC. Owner, Cindy L. Braden, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at the southeast corner of Harrison Avenue and Owens Avenue. Ward five, Summer Armstrong. Staff recommends approval on the land use entitlement project, subpart, or subapplication 26A, abeyance renotation 24-0616VAR1, to allow stub street termini where cul-de-sac or hammerhead terminus is required, and to allow a private street that does not conform to Title 19.04, complete street standards for public street requirements. Item 26B, abeyance renotation-24-0616WVR1, to allow a single-family attached residence that does not conform to Title 19.09 Form Based Code standards for setback and frontage standards, Lot 1. 26C, abeyance renotation 24-0616WVR2, to allow a single-family attached residence that does not conform to Title 19.09 Form Based Code standards for setback, lot coverage and frontage standards, Lot 2. 26D, abeyance renotation 24-0616WVR3, to allow a single-family attached residence that does not conform to Title 19.09 Form Based Code standards for setback, lots coverage and frontage standards, Lot 3. 26E, abeyance renotation 24-0616WVR4, to allow a single-family attached residence that does not conform to Title 19.09 Form Based Code standards for setback, lot coverage and frontage standards, Lot 4. 26F, abeyance renotation 24-0616WVR5, to allow a single-family attached residence that does not conform to Title 19.09 Form Based Code standards for setback and frontage standards, Lot 5. 26G, abeyance renotation 24-0616SDR1, for a proposed three-story, six-unit multifamily residential development with waivers of Title 19.09 Form Based Code standards. And 26H, abeyance renotation 24.0616TMP1 Owens and Harrison Residential, for a five-lot, single-family attached and one-six-unit multifamily condominium subdivision with waivers of Title 19.09 Form Based Code standards. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, staff finds the proposed residential development is compatible with the adjacent development and redevelopment vision within the surrounding area of the subject site. Typical yard spaces and setbacks are difficult to meet, given the unusual site shape. The unique shape and limited dimensions of the subject site create an extraordinary circumstance wherein it would be a hardship to achieve conformance to Title 19.09 Form Based Code requirements. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested waivers, variance, site development plan review, and tentative map. Please note additional documents of support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. If you can, please state and spell your name for the record and tell us a little bit about your project.
Good evening. Landon Christoperson, spelled C-H-R-I-S-T-O-P-H-E-R-S-O-N, 2885 East Quill Avenue, 89120. With me today is Cindy Braden, the developer. And what we have for you is a 1.55 acre parcel that's nestled between Owens Avenue, which is a one-way heading to the west, and Harrison, which is a one-way heading to the east. The parcel itself is, those streets are master streets, which limit the amount of access that can be on those streets. So therefore, working with staff, we developed an on-street, private street that comes in to give access to both the townhomes and the condo. The street itself, the variance, is because it is a dead-end street, and it doesn't meet those standards. But we do provide 28 feet from flow line to flow line, which meets the requirements for public safety. Along with that onsite street, staff has asked that we dedicate an additional six feet for a detached sidewalk along Owens, and with that would be an amenity zone at the back of curb, and also provide a pedestrian access across to the island to provide crossings there at H. The project itself meets all parking standards. We do have an additional five spaces, which is the driveways for the townhomes, but we can't count those towards the parking spaces, but they can be used by the homeowner. The units themselves, the townhomes, is 1,584 square feet, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath with a one-car garage. The condominium, there's two different floor plans, six total units, three-two-bedroom, one-bath, 933 square feet, three-three-bedroom, two-bath, 1,137 square feet. And these products are, again, for sale. The landscaping provided is, will meet the requested landscape material for the City of Las Vegas, Ward five. It is spaced 20 feet apart, and the architectural is a contemporary modern with the accents either being material or color and texture. And with that, the condominium also matches, so it becomes one contiguous project. We have read staff report. We appreciate their approval. We concur with their findings and conditions, and here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, sir. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any item, or sorry, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? If you're here for this item, please come down, stand up at a microphone so we can move through. Sir, you spoke on this item during the general public hearing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Got anything else to add that we didn't hear now that you've heard the presentation?
I support it. I'm in love with it. And if I wasn't disabled, I would buy me a property. I'm right adjacent across the street from that, 623, and I'm tired. I don't want to look at no funeral home and death for the rest of my days to be here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Yeah, my name is Marion Gibson, and I am the president of the Historic Black Community Neighborhood Association. Saturday, me and the vice president of the organization went out and talked to the neighbors all around, adjacent to that property that they're building, and they all in agreement. 85% of them that we interviewed said that they all agree because they want more properties coming into the neighborhood that is extending ownership. So they are in agreement with that. Just wanted to let you know. We just want to thank her.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Ma'am?
Hi. Yes, my name is Gerthe Polk. I own the property at 420 Harrison. It's right next to East Street, which was closed off. It's no longer a street, and I don't know if that's what they mean when, excuse me, and they're talking about the dead-end street. And that's what I need to figure out, because I own half of that street. I purchased it back in the 80s. And I don't know if that creates a problem.
So where's the, where's the project, your property?
420. It's right next to...
Yeah, that doesn't affect...
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
Sir, on the right, oh, you guys pick. Who wants to go first? Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, my name is Mohammed Abdullah, and representing Gwen Walker and the Walker African-American Museum and Research Center, which is right in that impacted area, we want to say we are in full agreement and support of that particular project. We need it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I am William McCurdy, senior. I am very much in support of that particular project because of the simple fact, and the Edmund Town Center is 90% full. There is a potential grocery store that wants to come to West Las Vegas, which is a California company, but they cannot reside, or they cannot go into the old Bylaws Market, because after doing a feasibility study, there's not enough rooftops in historical West Las Vegas to support that. So therefore, in order to get rooftops in West Las Vegas, I am supporting this project because we need rooftops so we can get another major grocery chain in our community. Back in the 50s and 60s, I was very much involved in the Golden West Shopping Center and the Lucas Plaza across the street, where we had all of these fine, fine stores, Wonder World West and Ben Franklin's, and a lot of different stores in that community. But without these rooftops, we would not be able to rebuild or bring businesses into West Las Vegas. So I am very much in support, and I will do anything to support economic survival in that community. As you are aware, Clark County Commissioner William McCurdy II, who's my son, he got a project being built close to that area also. We got all kind of development. And during Oscar Goodman's term as mayor, he wanted to change the course from residential to multi-use, and I thank God that Oscar did that during his term, and Carolyn's carried on, and now Shelley's carrying it on.
Thank you, Mr. McCurdy, for your comments. Anybody else for public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I am going to close public comment and invite the applicant back up. Is there anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much. At this point, I'll turn it over to the commissions, starting with Commissioner Munford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few questions. The main entrance is coming off of Harrison?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's the only entrance is off of Harrison, man?
That will be the only entrance.
Okay. And are you going to have HOA or CCNRs or anything?
That has been requested, yes. There will be an HOA.
Okay. I was talking to the councilwoman. She was asking about that.
Yeah.
Is there tandem parking?
There is. That's what I had mentioned, the driveways in front of each townhome. The one-car garage is counted towards the parking, but that driveway is not, but it will be usable for the homeowner.
Okay. And then the townhomes have a garage?
Correct. Yes, sir. One car.
And the tandem parking isn't in the garage, though, right?
No, no, it's the garage with the driveway behind it.
Okay. Are anybody, are you going to have any kind of restrictions and... Okay. Are anybody, are you going to have any kind of restrictions in terms of if somebody buys a unit, can they rent those, can they flip those units to investors or rent those units out as investors?
No.
Okay, good.
This is strictly for this community, and we will not be selling or renting to anybody that are investors. We're looking for the first-time homebuyer. We put this price point for this community, specifically for this community.
May I ask what the price point is?
280 to 325.
Okay. And then, for your landscape plan, what kind of trees, do you have trees on the, I think, yeah, I see you have trees. What size of trees are you going to be installing there?
They will be 24-inch box.
Okay.
And again, I do have two species that aren't on the recommended list. That staff has said that if it is approved, I do have to change those, and we will make those corrections.
Would it be possible to go to 36-inch, just from the get-go, to supply, have a better canopy and shade in that area?
We can look at that, Commissioner. The concern is, is price point. We're trying to meet a price point. So with every dollar that we spend on construction, it's an increase in the cost to the homeowner. So we're just trying to keep those costs low, but we can look into that.
Appreciate that, yeah. And then is the area around, is that gated or fenced in?
Yes, it will be. wrought iron.
Okay. All right. And that's all the questions I have.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other comments from the commission, although I didn't hear from Commissioner Kasama or Rogan that they had comments, are you prepared to make a motion?
Madam Commissioner, Fred Solis for the record. I'd like to read a condition for this item.
Okay, thank you.
So this would be for 26H. And the condition is, "In conjunction with creation, declaration, and recordation of the subject common interest community, and prior to the recordation of the covenants, codes, and restrictions (CCNR), or conveyance of any unit within the community, the developer shall record a declaration of private maintenance requirements (DPMR) as a covenant on all associated properties and on behalf of all current and future property owners. The DPMR shall include a listing of all privately owned and/or maintained infrastructure improvements, along with assignment of maintenance responsibility for each of the common interest community or the respective individual property owners, and shall provide a brief description of the required level of maintenance for privately maintained components. The DPMR must be reviewed and approved by the City of Las Vegas Department of Field Operations prior to recordation, and shall include a statement that all properties within the community are subject to the assessment for all associated costs should provide, should private maintenance obligations not be met, and the City of Las Vegas be required to provide for said maintenance. Also, the CCNRs are to include a statement of obligation of compliance with the DPMR. Following recordation, the developer shall submit a copy of the recorded DPMR and CCNR documents to the City of Las Vegas Department of Field Operations." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solis. So...
Madam Chair, just in the, just to let you know that the councilwoman, she was asking about the DPMR and those CCNRs, so...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we were aware.
Do you have a motion, Commissioner Munford?
I'd like to motion for approval for item 26, 24-0, abeyance notification, 24-0616. And items, additional items of 26A through 26H, H per what the planning staff just talked about with the DPMR. I'd like to motion for approval per planning recommendations.
And that's subject to all conditions?
Subject to all conditions, correct.
Thank you, Commissioner. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
I'm...
Commissioner Rogan? Please post, and that motion carries.
And that item will move on to City Council on May 21st.
Thank you. Okay, we're now going to go back to item 23, abeyance re-notification, 24-0668. Applicant Silver Desert Estates Limited Partnership Owner, United States of America. For possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at the northeast corner of Hickam Avenue and Jordanville Street, Ward Four, Alan Polensky, staff recommends approval on the land use entitlement project. 23A, abeyance re-notification, 24-0668, ZO N 1, from U, undeveloped, PCD, Planned Community Development, general plan designation to PD, planned development. 23B, abeyance re-notification, 24-0668, MOD 1, to amend the Lone Mountain West Master Development Plan to change the land use designation from PF, Public Facilities, to MFM, multifamily medium residential. Abeyance, oh, sorry, 23C, abeyance re-notification, 24-0668, VAR 1, to allow 21-foot-tall retaining walls where six feet is the maximum allowed and an overall wall height of 21 feet, where 12 feet is the maximum allowed. Item 23D, abeyance re-notification, 24-0668, SDR 1, for proposed three-story, 282-unit senior citizen apartments development. May I please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, the proposed development will provide senior housing to the Lone Mountain West community, which has the capacity to accommodate the higher density required for this project. The development has been designed with sensitivity to existing adjacent single-family residential properties, as well as incorporating the existing topography into the site for use as open space. The requested variance for retaining and perimeter wall heights meets the requirements set forth by NRS for the granting of a variance with the site's extreme topography. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the requested rezoning, modification, variance, and site development plan review. Please note additional documents of protest were received after publication.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Can you please state and spell your name for the record, and give us your address, and tell us about the project?
Yes, Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. This is the location of the property. This is the 215 to the east, and to the south is Hickam Avenue. The project, by way of background, the BLM owns the property today, and it's my understanding that the city has a reservation on it to be used for a very specific purpose. The intended use for it is for seniors, those are 55 and older who are on a fixed income. In January of 2024, the city put out a request for proposal to see if they could attract developers to develop this in a 55 and older project for people on a fixed income. And in April of 2024, the RFP was awarded to Palindrom. The RFP puts forth the AMI, or the area median income levels, that the city wants to see the rent set at, and the target range is 30 to 80% AMI. What's before you tonight is a multifamily project, again, for people who are 55 years of age and older on a fixed income. And the entrance and access would be here off of Hickam to the south. I'm going to spend a minute talking about what I'll call the arroyo in the middle. We do, there's a pretty significant amount of fall that runs from the west to the east towards the 215. It's about 41 feet. That drives the need for the wall variance. The wall variance is going to specifically be along our west boundary and along our north boundary. There are existing screen walls or subdivision walls on those two boundaries today. And while our variance is asking to go to a height of 21 feet, that's because of that significant retaining and slope that goes from west to east. So that 21-foot-tall wall will be seen on our side of the project, interior to the site. It will not be seen above those existing walls that are to the west and to the north. In terms of site layout and site design, we have this existing kind of arroyo wash that goes through the middle. I'll show you a rendering of what we anticipate that that would look like. But we are trying to take advantage of what some of the topography is within the center of the site. This site, I think, this colored site plan, I think, is maybe one of the most important that I can show. Everything in blue is a two-story building. Everything in blue is a two-story building. So everything along our western edge, again, there are homes that sit on the other side of Jordanville Street here. So everything on our western edge is a maximum height of two stories. That would be right around 30 feet. Everything on our north is also in blue, again, there are homes to the north of us. That, too, is at a two-story elevation for a maximum height of right around 30 feet. Where you get the 35 feet, or the three-story component of this project, is everything in this beige color. So that would be along the beltway here, and then right in the center of the site. So when this application was filed, there was specific attention paid to the fact that there are homes to the north and to the west, and we wanted to make sure that the three-story component to this was over by the beltway and not to the north and not to the west on our site plan. This gives you an idea, kind of a rendering, of what that arroyo part would look like in the middle of the site. You can also see how the elevations of the two-story would look in this area. And then kind of in the middle, you see here where that three-story component is. This is just a, not as pretty of a picture. And then that gives you, let me see if there's any other ones I wanted to show. I think that the two things, we did do a neighborhood meeting in January. A number of neighbors were there. I'm sure there will be some here to speak tonight. They had concerns over the traffic on Hickam. There are already a number of cars that park up and down Hickam. The density, at one point, this was planned for a library, as they told us, so I had to go and research what that was about. But a lot of it also, there was talk about the views, or what is this going to look like from our front yard or our backyard. So we had the architects create this rendering. This would be if you were sitting on the other side of Jordanville Street, and those front yards face Jordanville, which is this street right here. And then this is that subdivision's block wall. Our block wall will not be taller than this. Again, that very tall wall sits on our side, not to the existing neighbors. And then beyond that, you'll start to see the roof lines of the two-story building. I won't say you won't see anything, but it's just the top of the roofs. It's not the entire 30 feet of that two-story building. And then if you're to the north of this project, again, two-story homes sit on the other side of this, but this would be if you were in the backyard of one of those homes and you were looking southbound. We're putting in landscaping on our side, and then beyond that, kind of in this area, you can start to see that roof line. So I thought that that was an important exhibit to show relative to what the neighbors would see to the north and to the south, or, excuse me, to the north looking south. A couple of other things came up during the neighborhood meeting. One was, so this has, this project has 282 total units. And when you talk about seniors, the code does allow for a little bit less parking than would otherwise be required for, say, a market rate or non-senior project. We met the parking, but what we heard was a concern because of the existing cars that are parking on Hickam today, that perhaps our project wasn't providing enough. So again, we have 282 units, and by code, we would be required to provide 212 parking spaces. That takes into account that this is a senior apartment complex. However, we're now going to provide 282. So it's significantly overparked relative to how your code looks at this. But again, that was to address the concerns that cars from this project would also add to the cars that are parking on Hickam. So we increased the number of parking spaces that we're providing along or inside of our project. We do appreciate staff recommending approval of all of these items, including the wall variance. Just a couple of other things, these are all fully interior hallway units, which means every building will have elevator access, whether it's two-story or three-story. There will be elevators in every building. In terms of amenities for the residents who live here, the interior amenities will include community room, exercise room, a computer room, which includes Wi-Fi for the residents, library, game room, and laundry. And then for the exterior, we plan on doing pool, community garden, and those walking paths that I described earlier. And so with that, I am going to pause. I'll be happy to answer any questions now, or after the neighbors have an opportunity to come up and talk. And we do agree with all of staff's conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Lazovich. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to be heard on this, please come down to the podium. I see folks moving down. Who else here for this item? Can I just get a show of hands? Okay, folks, come on down, so we can, like, get you lined up. If you're planning on speaking... All right, good evening, sir. Please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address.
My name is Vaughn Richards, V-A-U-G-H-N-R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S. I was at that meeting, and it sounds like she's really trying to make that public meeting, FYMCA, and she's trying to cover those items, but she's not nearly come close to the problem of parking. You got two people in, you got a two-bedroom in there, and if you got two people there, and it's for active retirees and working people, they're going to have to have a place to park. And if they're not giving them, well, she said it would give us one parking space per spot, but if there's two people, there are going to be two cars, it's going to be a mess. There needs to be much more parking there. The other problem, that's the main problem for me, is that that project does not belong there at all. That project is going to be isolated. There's no shopping. There's no stores for, you know, markets or hospitals, I mean, doctors' houses. There's nothing in that area. So it's, and there's no public transportation there. So it's going to be a major problem for those people, I believe. Let's see. I did a, one of those petitions, online petition things, and I don't want to really read it, but I did it, and I got 188 people sign that petition online. And I thought that was pretty good, because most people are interested in it, but they're not interested enough to get that much involved. I mean, we don't have 188 people here tonight. And I don't know why not, you know? We've got to not have this project here. I also have all of these right here that are in your staff report. And these are all complaints about this project. Some of them have to do with the same thing we're talking about, and others are just other things that came up. And I don't, we don't need to bring all those up unless you, well, you already have them, so your staff should have looked at them, and they should know.
Sir, you're...
I'm concerned, I guess my final thing would be, or two final things. The neighborhood, I don't think, is opposing this development out of emotion or resistance. We're advocating for proper land use, safety, and long-term community benefit. This parcel was placed here for a reason. It's a public facility, and it's not to sell out for the future of the mountain for a poorly placed project.
All right, sir, you're almost a minute over. If you could please wrap up.
Okay, this is the last thing. No, I'm not going to say. I'm going to let...
All right. Thank you, sir.
My partner speak first, and then I will say one more thing, if I might.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name and spell it for the record, and give us your address.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Scott Cesaron, C-E-S-A-R-O-N-E, and my address is 10539 Brownsville. My property is going to be directly north of the proposed property. I'm just here to respectfully ask this committee to deny the request, due to the fact that this part of land was zoned for public facility, not multifamily... this part of land was zoned for public facility, not multifamily dwelling. Public facility zones are designated for, to serve our community, and taking this away, I think, does not benefit the residents in our community. And like voiced earlier, the strain on the infrastructure, traffic, talking about 285 units by a couple residents in each unit, that's quite a bit. Cliff Shadows, the road it's on, is a 35 mile per hour. There is a, right at Hickam and Cliff Shadows, a school bus pickup. Just really concerned on the amount of traffic that this property is going to bring to our community. And finally, just the palette of our community as well, these three-story structures in the area isn't going to fit, isn't going to be in line with the palette of what the Lone Mountain Vista's community is. So for those reasons, I'm asking respectfully to deny this zone variance change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cesaron. Anybody else here for public comment? If you're here for public comment on this item, please come down so we can get a sense of how many people are going to be speaking. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, Melinda Vargas, 4233 Jordanville. I also just wanted to mention that originally, we were told that it was a senior community, and yes, somebody 55 and over does have to live there, but anybody else can live in that community. And I mean, that just to me, it just doesn't sit right with me, you know? Because to me, if it was truly a senior community, I'm okay with that, but because anybody else can live with that senior, I mean, that, to me, isn't truly a senior community. So for me, that's just, at that point, I wasn't on board with it, so. And like they said, that community, it, there's just not enough parking for that. You know, you can have two to four people living in those units. That's like up to, what, 400 to 800 people living in that tiny space? It just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Sir, go ahead.
Hello, ma'am. I'm Stan Wilkinson. I live at 10550 West Alexander Road, which is the condominium complex directly to the southeast of that three-story portion of the senior apartments going to build on, probably 100 feet from that three-story portion. So I'm in opposition to the three-story aspect of it. I know most seniors don't want to live in two-story, let alone three-story. A lot of people a lot younger than that in the condos don't even want to live in a second story. So I find that a little bit out of line with the senior apartment portion. I'm not necessarily opposed to some type of project going in there. The only other thing is, I don't know what kind of background information you have on this contractor. There's a lot of information online that they did another high-density residential project in New Mexico. The contractor didn't finish it or upkeep the property to standards, and the residents are suing the contractor. They're amidst of a big lawsuit that's in New Mexico. So that can all be looked up online. So I'm not necessarily against the project, but I think it should be a different contractor, and maybe the three-story portion goes away. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Donna Moretti. I do live in the area. My concern about the, about the putting so many seniors in that location is our emergency services aren't exactly in abundance in that area. I personally care for my elderly father, and there have been occasions needing to call for emergency services where oftentimes it's just, they're really backed up. And that would be my concern for myself and my family, but also all of those seniors. If they need to care for, call for emergency services, like, what's the wait going to be? What's the backlog? And what is that going to do to the rest of the community?
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Sir, go ahead.
Hi, my name is George Mayfield, M-A-Y-F-I-E-L-D. I live at 4309 Jordanville, which is directly at the corner of the northwest side of the proposed site. Echoing with the other, dead to what Mr. Richards said and Mr. Cesaron, I don't really foresee these units being kept on to one or two senior people, as the young lady just stated. It could be upwards of 850 people. Hickam Avenue, calling it an avenue, it's more like an alley. And again, right now, it's fully crowded with vehicles on either side. Parking is going to be expansive, and we do appreciate the reservation to make the unit bring in the level down so that this, our line of sight's better. However, there's no, again, there's no, there's no public anything. There's a small Walmart about a mile away. There's no transportation, and I think it's going to be a problem with the schoolchildren getting on and off of buses on Cliff Shadows. It's already heavily burdened. So I would, I would be willing to compromise for units that are maybe just two-story and one-story with maybe half the occupancy level, but again, that small 15-acre BLM land is, it's, it just seems like we're just trying to put a lot of people in a postage stamp. So thanks for your time, ma'am.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
I am really happy that all these people came. I didn't know I had that many people that responded. That's wonderful.
I'll give you, I'll give you 30 more seconds.
30 more seconds.
30 more seconds.
That's all I want to say.
Okay.
What I want to say is that I know you guys are all up here, and you're all concerned about, does it meet the code? Does it go by all the rules that are established? That this project is not a good fit for the neighborhood, it's not good for the city. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else for public comment on item 23? Okay, seeing none, I am going to close public comment and invite the applicant back up. Is there anything you would like to add, Ms. Lazovich?
I think just a couple of points I want to raise. Again, I do want to emphasize, this is for seniors who are 55 and older. It's required to be that. That's what the RFP that the city put out, it was for seniors. What that means is that every, that at least one person in the unit must be 55, meaning you can't have somebody living in the unit who's not 55. Now, you could have somebody who's 58, I suppose married to somebody who's 52, but that 58-year-old is the qualifying age. You couldn't have two 40-year-olds living there. And the only way that you could have, this came up at the neighborhood meeting, the only way that you could have a minor living there is if that senior was the legal guardian of that minor. In terms of this being two and three stories, again, there was a lot of care paid to the way the site plan laid out. You see very few buildings that are three-story. The majority of them are all two-story. And again, the comment was made that I don't know that seniors want to live in even a two-story, let alone a three-story. All the buildings have an elevator, so that changes the nature of wanting to live on the second story or even the third story, because you're getting there by elevator rather than walking upstairs, which happens sometimes in non-55-years-and, 55-years-and-older communities. So I think that I will pause there and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Lazovich. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Kasama.
Thank you, Chair. Once again, please let me know if I am cutting out. Regarding this application, first and foremost, I think about the special staff and property, as well as people in Texas. And the roof plot, these areas is, is the, the topography of the land, also very familiar with its neighborhood, particularly with the neighborhood of the south of this site. And so with that, I do applaud, yeah, we can move forward, the local neighborhood community. I think that with elevators in place, it makes sense for those three stories. And once again, due to the unusual topography of this particular site, and the fact that these, you know, higher walls than normal, they're not in the name of the outline anymore than I would say normal property on the normal topography would. And I also have to speak with public works and having city staff verify that this project will accommodate the parking around this area, I'm raising a motion to approve item 23, a bayance renotification, 24-0650.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comments from the dais, there is a motion on the floor to approve item 23, subject to all conditions.
And Madam Chair, it's 23A through D, correct?
Yes, sir, thank you. 23A through D, subject to all conditions. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan? Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Okay, great. Please post, and that does pass.
And that item will move on to City Council on May 21st.
Thank you. Right. Moving on to item 27, this is a bayance renotification, 24-0650. Applicant Ibarra's Commissary LLC, owner Juan and Norma Martinez Family Trust, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at 634 Northeastern Avenue, Ward 3 Diaz. Staff recommends denial on 24-0650 VAR 1 and SUP 1. Staff recommends approval on 24-0650 SUP 2. 27A is the, oh, sorry, 27A is the bayance renotification, 24-0650 VAR 1, to allow existing perimeter walls and fences that do not conform to Title 19.08 outdoor storage screening requirements. 27B is a bayance renotification, 24-0650 SUP 1, for proposed commissary use. 27C, a bayance renotification, 24-0650 SUP 2, for proposed open-air vending transient sales lot use. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, staff finds that the proposed commissary development is not compatible with the surrounding commercial land uses in the area, as evidenced by the requested variance, to allow existing perimeter walls and fences that do not conform to outdoor storage screening requirements. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested variance, 24-0650 VAR 1, and associated special use permit, 24-0650 SUP 1, for the proposed commissary land use. Also, the applicant has requested a special use permit to allow an open-air vending mobile food vendor to operate on the subject site within a parking space in the front parking lot area directly in front of the building from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., where 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. is allowed adjacent to residentially-zoned lot. Staff has determined that the request is suitable for the subject site due to the fact the existing residential land use located to the east of the subject site is approximately 205 feet away from where the food truck will be located and will not be negatively impacted by the use and operation on the subject site. Therefore, staff recommends approval of special use permit, 24-0650 SUP 2, with conditions. Please note additional documents for protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Can you please state and spell your name and give us your address for the record? And then tell us about your project.
Yes, good evening. I'm Jonathan Ibarra with Ibarra's Commissary. You said spell my name? Jonathan, J-O-N-A-T-H-A-N, last name I-B-A-R-R-A. I am here today to propose the approval of 634 Northeastern Avenue as a food truck and food trailer commissary. The approval of this project will also aid in the approval of 38 more business licenses for mobile food trucks. This will also keep businesses from seeking licenses in other jurisdictions. This is occurring due to the shortages of commissars in the city of Las Vegas. As the food truck industry continues to grow in Southern Nevada, we hope that we can count on your support in opening our second commissary. Thank you.
Thank you. This item has been noticed for public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item? Good evening, ma'am. Please go ahead, grab a microphone, and state and spell your name for the record and give us your address.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I am, my name is Leah Roberts. I am the trustee of the Joseph G. Roberts Revocable Family Trust. That is the owner of the property at 640 and 650 Northeastern, which is adhesion to the property 634 that is in question tonight. I am not here to, for, to speak against this project. I'm here only for clarification. And that concerns the fact that right behind my building, I have a design here that I made myself with my own writing, being an engineer, I could do that very fast right here when I'm speaking. If you can see it, I don't know. Is it this way you want to see it or the other way?
You can flip it, I think.
Okay, okay. So this is northeastern, south this way, north this way. This-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you move it into the box that's marked with the black tape? See right underneath the microphone?
I don't know what you're saying. Oh, right here.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. Yes. So this is, this is eastern, south this way, north this way. This is Poppy Lane. My property is here. There, in fact, there are two parcels. This is one parcel where there is a Mexican restaurant, and this is 650, that's another parcel. The 630 in question is right here, south to my property. The only thing I'm here for is to clarify, and I hope I do get that tonight, who is the owner of this alley that is right behind my building? Because it's an alley that comes off Poppy Lane, and it's right behind my building.
Through you, Madam Chair, this is my, for the record, that is public right-of-way, so it is the city's right-of-way.
It's the city's alleyway?
Yeah, Poppy Lane.
I couldn't hear what I said.
If you could repeat that.
Sure, through you, Madam Chair, it is the city of Las Vegas, it's public right-of-way.
Okay. Okay, which is exactly what I was told.
Madam Chair, through you, Poppy Lane is the right-of-way. However, there is a small piece of the subject site which creates an access to Poppy Lane, which is part of the proposed Ibarra commissary. That is part of their subject site. So there is a small piece of their site which provides access to Poppy Lane directly behind her property.
I don't know what you're talking about. What is that piece of, whatever it is? What is it? Is it a fence?
Is it?
Because if there's, there's the question about that fence that is between my property and the property east of that, in other words, here, that is a fence that was put by the tenant of the, that used to be here at 634, it's not my fence. I have nothing to do with that fence.
Okay.
Absolutely, none whatsoever. What is the other item that you're talking about? If there is another one.
Hold on one second. Let's do this, because I think it's going to require a visual. So we're going to go ahead and trail this. I'm going to let you speak to Mr. Boyle's. You guys can, you can look at his maps and figure it out, and then we'll bring you back up. And in the meantime, we will move on to item 28, okay?
Yeah.
So just step over there, and you can speak with our staff.
Sure, sure.
Okay, great.
That's what I'm here for. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so let's move on to item number 28. A bayance, 25-0003. Applicant owner, 712 Holdings LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at 710 and 712 South First Street, Ward 3 Diaz. Staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project. 28A, a bayance, 25-0003 EOT 1, for an approved 3,173 square-foot liquor establishment tavern use with a 3,936 square-foot outdoor patio area. 28B, a bayance, 25-0003 EOT 2, for the approved conversion of a single-family dwelling and commercial building into a 3,173 square-foot liquor establishment tavern with a 3,936 square-foot outdoor patio area. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, this is the applicant's fourth request for an extension of time, and staff is recommending denial.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, through you, I'm just going to make an abstention on this particular item, as I'm under contract with the applicant for this property and have an ongoing business relationship. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, sir. Can you please state and spell your name and give us your address for the record and tell us a little about this item?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Evan Boyd, B-O-Y-D, 2913 Bernardo Lane, 89102. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Mosler, and 712 Holdings LLC. As a brief history, we purchased the property back in 2024 and got right to work. We engaged Tanny Engineering for the Civs, and we are working with Tanny Trinity Haven Development, excuse me, on the architectural and build-out plans. In addition, we've had our pre-up with the city and are currently working through their utility request. We'll likely be back before you in the next few months regarding our SDR, but in the meantime, it's important to us to maintain these approvals. We look forward to developing a project that is beneficial to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. This item has been noticed for public comment, public hearing. Is there anybody from the public wishing to make comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and pass it back to the commission, given that Commissioner Schlotman has recused himself. Is there anybody else on the dais that wants to make a comment? Commissioner DeSalvio?
Just one question. Are you opposed to a one-year instead of a two?
One-year-
One-year is fine.
One-year is fine?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to make a motion of approval based on one-year.
Okay.
For agenda item number 28, 250003.
Madam Chair, through you, I just want to bring up, for a one-year, this is for an alcohol use. I don't know that they would be able to complete, get a certificate of occupancy, go through the background checks for a privileged license within one year would be my only concern.
And you might be right on that. Okay, then I will amend that motion to two years.
Right, there is a motion on the floor to approve it, and, to approve, I'm sorry, to approve item 28, subject to all conditions, and sir, you would agree to all conditions?
Yes, we do.
Okay, please cast your votes. Commissioner Kusama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Please post, and that motion carries.
And that is final action tonight, unless appeal to the city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, item 29, abeyance re-notification 25-0008 SUP 1. Applicant owner, 7676 Lake Mead Buffalo LLC. For possible action on the land use entitlement project request for a proposed 4,909 square foot cannabis dispensary use at 7676 West Lake Mead Boulevard, suite number 101, Ward 1 Knutson. Staff recommends approval. Good evening, sir. Can you please state, spell your name, give us your address for the record?
Madam Chair?
Oh, sorry.
Through you, may I give a staff report?
Yes, may I please, may we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, the subject site meets all minimum special use permit requirements set forth by Title 1912 for a cannabis dispensary and staff recommends approval of the special use permit. Please note additional documents of protest and support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, sir, would you please state your name and give us your address for the record?
Yes, good evening. My name is Chandler Cooks, C-H-A-N-D-L-E-R-C-O-O-K-S, at 1108 Freeman, 89106. So I'm representing 7676 Lake Mead Buffalo LLC, the owner of the property located at 7676 West Lake Mead Boulevard, Suite 101. We're here respectfully requesting your approval for a special use permit for a 4,909 square foot cannabis dispensary at this location. This application meets every technical and regulatory requirement under Title 19 and Title 6.95, including all minimum distance separations from sensitive uses such as parks, schools, churches, and other dispensaries. A certified land survey has verified full compliance and planning staff has recommended approval. A key component of this project is safety and security. Upon approval, a robust security plan in line with state cannabis compliance board regulations will be developed. This includes 24/7 surveillance, secure interior access, and licensed onsite personnel during business hours. While we do not have a dispensary operator in place yet, but negotiations are underway, we are preparing the site for a qualified future tenant. The proactive entitlement allows us to ensure that the site is compliant, secure, and aligned with community expectations before operations ever begin. The purpose of this SUP is to proactively prepare the space for a future licensed operator who will be thoroughly vetted and held to the highest security, compliance, and operational standards. No onsite consumption is allowed, minors are prohibited, and the dispensary will be subject to, by internal review, by the city. We respectfully ask for your approval and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, sir. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and I will turn it over to the commissioners, starting with Commissioner Rogan.
Good to hear. I have reviewed this item and I agree with the applicant that it meets all the necessary Title 19 requirements and I'm ready to make a motion for approval unless it is asserted at that point.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else have any comments from the dais? Okay, seeing none, please make your motion.
With regards to agenda item 29, project 25-0008, SUP 1, make a motion for approval, subject to staff's conditions.
And sir, you would agree to all conditions?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kusama?
Aye.
And then Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Great, please post. That motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Director Floyd?
And Madam Chair, that item will move on to city council on May 21st.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Let's move on to number 30. Abeyance re-notification 25-0011 VAR 1. Applicant owner, FBLV District 2 LLC. For possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow proposed perimeter and retaining walls that do not conform to Title 19.08 development standards for height and spacing at 3010 Regal Avenue, Ward 3 Diaz. Staff recommends denial. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the submitted justification letter states the applicant is seeking modification to the approved project design due to changes of the construction documents caused by an equipment redesign required by NV Energy. The initial equipment specified by NV Energy was revised in the field and has increased the overall height. However, no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing a wall height that does not meet Title 19 wall development standards. Alternative design of the commercial development would allow conformance to Title 19 requirements. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested variance. Please note additional documents of protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you please state your name and give us your address for the record?
Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here today on behalf of Area 15. This is District 2. In the red areas here, here, and here are the areas where we need to screen some mechanical equipment. And just to give you an idea of what that mechanical equipment, it doesn't all look like this and every, every, each little area has its own example, but this is by way of an example, one of the examples. That's why we're asking for the increased wall height or screen height so that we can screen them.
Okay, thank you. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and turn it back over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Schlotman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've reviewed this item and usually I'm opposed to, you know, bringing up wall heights higher than standards, but this one, it does serve a purpose of adding the NV Energy gear, which is always not the, not the, not the most pleasant thing to be staring at as you're driving down the road. So after looking at it and you providing all the pictures and documentation, thank you for sending that over over the past couple of weeks. I am in support of this and I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else have comments? Nope, please make your motion.
Madam Chair, on item 30, abeyance re-notification 25-0011 VAR 1, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions. And you agree to all staff's conditions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kusama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Please post. That motion carries.
And that is final action. Let's appeal to city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to call back up. Item 27. Those who were here for public comment, if you want to come back down, but why don't we have staff walk through?
We clarified it. We clarified. It's very clear.
Okay.
I'm, that's why I was here, to clarify that item, and I'm done.
Okay. Fantastic.
Very simple. Thank you very much.
Love it when we get something resolved.
But I wanted it to be here in a public session to have that done, so.
Okay.
Not through back doors and so on. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Samantha Silcox, S-I-L-C-O-X, and I am also here on behalf of Ibarra's Commissary. The proposal of this commissary, I really want to reiterate the importance of the need of the commissary for business licenses for mobile food trucks and food trailers. Right now, there is a shortage in multiple jurisdictions for commissaries. Commissaries are required by Southern Nevada Health District in order for mobile food trucks and food trailers to get their business license. In regards to the wall that is not meeting variance, I guess, or the coating, right now there is a six-foot CMU wall and then the senior, I believe it's the Senior Citizen Living Center right behind us had put up that four-foot wrought iron fence on the top. It is also a 25-foot gap between that fence and their, and their center. So I do not believe it will cause any sort of disturbance. There's no generator, there's no mechanical work being done. It is a very quiet business. We currently have a commissary at 1935 Fremont Street and we've had no complaints from our neighbors as far as disturbances of smell, waste, noise. And I just, the biggest point that I want to point out when it comes to this commissary is the business license. We help with licensing for our clients when we rent out our food trailers and we hear it all the time that there is no commissary for them to get so they can start to operate, you know, their small business. So as a small business ourselves, we want to really push that so we can continue to help other small businesses grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment on this item? Okay, I will then close public item, public comment on item 27 and pass it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Schlotman.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chairwoman. If I could ask the applicant to come back up? You were, you were at, off of 15 at one point, right?
Yes, that's where I build the food trucks, right next to Area 15. Yeah.
Okay, are you still in that location as well?
No, I moved about a year ago over to the north because the project with Area 15, they took over the front, so we went ahead and just moved about a year ago. It's been about a year.
Okay, cool. I actually live across the street from your spot on Fremont.
Oh, yeah, 1935 Fremont.
Yeah, I'm at 1980, so at the three-story lofts across the street, so.
Got it.
And, you know, I, how long have you been there?
10 years.
You've been there 10 years?
10 years, huh?
I thought you'd been there three years, but.
No, 10 years.
It's been a while. I can say I hadn't had any trouble out of your spot over there. If anything, it helped our community because, you know, we've, we've had a problem with squatters in a lot of the buildings up and down Fremont Street and that particular area with all the activity that you have there. It kind of keeps, keeps the riffraff away. And, you know, I did hear that there was a little bit of concern about being on Eastern and traffic going in and out of your commissary, or they're expecting a lot of traffic going in and out of the commissary, but I don't know when the, when do the trucks go in and out of your spot on Fremont right now?
It's, because they have different hours of operation, it's very sporadic, so you, we've never experienced a backflow of cars or trailers or food trucks or anything like that. So that's never been a problem. Same with this new property. It's actually even longer. Okay, so if that was a concern, I could tell you there's nothing to worry about. We will never run into that problem.
I mean, I, in all the years of you being across the street, I think I've only seen maybe four, four trailers going in and out. Maybe it's just a timing thing, but, so it, it would have less of a traffic impact than a lot of other businesses. How many trailer, or how many trucks do you think you'll have at this new location?
At this new location, I'll be able to house 38 new food trucks.
Okay. And, you know, I would be opposed to the screening, the, the different, I mean, the one thing about this property that's unique is that the apartments or the houses behind you are, there's such a grade difference that when you're looking directly out the back of your lot, you're looking at the roof of the neighbors, so they're not having to come out in the backyard and look directly into your yard, so. For those reasons, I can get behind this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay, great. Are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, on item 27, abeyance re-notification 24-0650, 27A through C, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions, and you agree to all staff's conditions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kusama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Please post. That motion carries.
And Madam Chair, that will move on to city council on May 21st.
Thank you. Item number 31, abeyance re-notification 25-0013 VAR 1. Applicant Alyssa Alicia Fow, owner Nicholas Charles Fow, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow existing residential accessory structures, shed, and detached garage, a proposed patio cover and home addition that do not conform to Title 19.06 development standards for separation and setbacks at 5517 Rebecca, Ward 6 Bruni. Staff recommends denial. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the subject site is developed with an existing single-family dwelling that was constructed with multiple unpermitted and structurally failing structures. The applicant is proposing to renovate the property. The submitted justification letter cites enhancing functionality of the single-family residence and repairing unpermitted and improper renovations from previous owners as justification for these variance requests. However, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing a wall height that does not meet Title 19 development standards. Alternative design would allow conformance to Title 19 requirements. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested variance. Please note additional documents for support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. If you could please state and spell your names for the record and give us your address and then tell us a little bit about the project.
Sure. My name is Alicia Fow. That's A-L-I-C-I-A. Last name is P as in Paul, F as in Frank, AU. My husband, Nick.
Nick Fow.
Yeah, is same last name. We own this house. We bought this house. It's a, it's a 1970s, it was out in the middle of the desert, rural residential staple of the house. We are on a well with eight other homes, actually, at the same time. So with that, we kind of got some of the nuances of a 70s house. So one of the things that we got pointed out was this garage that was built, as far as I can tell in the county assessor's records, it's been on there since the 80s. That was not permitted. We would like to keep it. And then there's a shed to the north up here that's a little close to this wall and five instead of six feet from the edge of the house. The neighbor to the north has emphatically brought us postcards that are very excited about supporting that. And then the rest of the postcard kind of read really wonky. Some of the neighbors that we spoke to didn't really fully understand what we were talking about. The home addition is really just this wall. It's pushing it out three feet to be flush with the house. The house wasn't actually built to setbacks in the 70s because they were out in the middle of nowhere and they kind of did what they wanted. So that would put us at 43, but we're looking to put on a porch on here to both add to the roofline and shade the house and cut down energy consumption in that area. And that would put us at 31.9. I think the, the staff reports always go down, so it was at 31 feet. And then the final part is this separation between this trellis for a, for a patio on the south end here. Instead of six feet, it's 3.9. One of the things that we're really looking to do is kind of help to beautify our neighborhood. Across the street, we look at the backyard wall of a subdivision. We don't have any homes that actually look at us. We look at their backyard and their, their wall. There's four homes on our street, are, including ours, and as one of the main points of the well, our well association, this, this home is, is registered as the head point of that. We would also like to be a, a community point within our group to have somewhere to commune and do all that, like, get together with our neighbors on water consumption and different things, but without necessarily having to vacuum every single time I see something. So some of the other things that we had seen, I went to some of our neighbors, anyone that we spoke to was very supportive of it. we spoke to was very supportive of it. The only people I did not get it responsible with because they weren't home. Anything was just really, they just were curious on the wording, and so I made this little graphic for them. But we'd be happy to answer any other questions? Questions? Sorry, words.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment, pass it back to the commission, starting with myself because it is in Ward 6. I had the opportunity to come out and see the project. You know, I think it's going to be a really great set of upgrades to the community. I know there are, you know, a number of items that have to come on for variance, but I think it overall is going to be really beneficial and harmonious and compatible for the rest of the community. And I know you did show me one of your neighbor's support letters that said, beautiful remodel, great addition. Yeah, there you go. Fully support this. This is a very good remodel and upgrade. And that's your neighbor that's immediately...
To the north.
To the north. So unless there's anybody else with comments on this item, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve number 31, Abeyance Renotification 25-0013VAR1, subject to all staff's conditions, and you do agree to all staff's conditions?
Yes.
Okay, great. Fantastic. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Great, please post, and that motion carries.
And that is final action. Unless appeal to the city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, item 32, Abeyance Renotification 25-0021VAR1, applicant, owner, Pacoli Ranch Community Association, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow an electronic message unit LED illuminated display within 200 feet of property zone for residential use or such as prohibited at 9501 Red Hills Road. Ward 2, Seaman, staff recommends denial. May I please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, the proposed sign is within 200 feet of existing single-family homes and does not meet the distance separation requirements. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested variance. Please note additional documents of protest and support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Can you please again state your name, spell it for the record, and give us your address, and tell us a little bit about the project?
My name is Mary Ann Goodsell, G-O-O-D-S-E-L-L. I live at 1608 Taylor Woodrow Drive. I am the president of the Pacoli Ranch HOA. We currently have, to orient you, this is our clubhouse. This is a set of tennis courts, a very small parking lot. This is Red Hills, which is within Pacoli Ranch, not an enormous street, but it is a public road with two lanes and a center turn lane. Currently, we have a marquee that sits opposite of this, this little black line is actually the line of the new proposed marquee. The current one is original to the property, so it's about 34 years old, and it runs parallel with the road this way. It is lit with fluorescent tubing, so that tells you about how old that is. We are proposing doing a marquee that will run now perpendicular to the road. There are residents, the backs of their homes run this way, so we'd like to propose that the replacement marquee run only directional towards the roads. Adjacent to this little parking lot is Pigott Elementary School, and they installed a digital marquee, I think it was, Commissioner Walsh, you may remember when they, much larger than ours, it's probably about double the size of ours. It also just simply faces traffic. I think there might be some homes there, but that's our request to turn it the other way and replace the old sign.
Okay, thank you. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and I will turn it over to Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, I went over the details with your contractor that's going to build a new sign. What's unique about what I've seen here is you're reversing the sign towards not going to be facing the homes. And the first thing that came to my mind was the public school system putting their signs up and real strict requirements on time and things like that. This project does not do that. If anything, it beautifies the front of the building and complex. So if there's no other questions from council, I'm ready to make a motion.
I just got...
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing, I can get behind it, but we've, when we've done with the school, we've put hours of the signage being lit. And just to stay, you know, with past practice, I would respectfully ask that we put some business hours on it so, because it's exactly what we just made the school do too as well. During school hours, they can have it lit, and then after school hours, that sign was not lit, just so it wasn't light pollution within the neighborhood. So I would ask that maybe there be some kind of hours put on that sign?
We did, we did discuss that this evening. We discussed about the portion of it. It would not be on any hours 10 or after.
We have, on our tennis courts that are just on the other side of the parking lot, those do have lights, and we have a 10 o'clock shut off, so that would be entirely within. And we have a playground that's also lit at night with a 10 o'clock shut off, so it would be completely consistent with, we'd be more than happy to comply with keeping it. We don't want to irritate our neighbors.
So 10:00 PM shut off and what time to turn on?
We allow the, I don't know what the school regulations are. We allow the tennis courts to turn on at 6:00. I'm not, I mean, I guess we could take that for a test drive. I don't know if that's too early, and the school light seems to always be on, so I don't know, I don't, we'd be more than happy to investigate what they have, or maybe Commissioner Walsh knows what their timeframe they were permitted to do, but we'd be happy to comply with whatever seems reasonable.
Madam Chair, through you, the typical condition for the school district does allow them to turn them back on at 6:00 AM prior to school.
Yeah, that was my recollection, so...
That is a condition. Are you okay with that?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, we can add a condition that would read, "The monument sign shall not be illuminated between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM daily." Thank you.
Okay, not a problem. Commissioner Walsh?
Okay, with that, through you, Madam Chairperson, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 32 for the variance 25-0021-VAR1 for approval.
And that's subject to all conditions?
And subject to additional conditions.
And you agree to those conditions, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan? Okay, please post, and that motion does carry. Thank you.
And that is final action. Let's appeal to the city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Okay, item 33, Abeyance Renotification 25-0022SDR, applicant, owner, 551 GA Holdings LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed five-story mixed-use development consisting of 87 residential units and 3,464 square feet of commercial space at the southwest corner of Gas Avenue and 6th Street, Ward Diaz, Ward 3 Diaz. Staff recommends approval. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, staff has determined this proposal for mixed-use development aligns with the downtown master plan's vision for higher-density development maximizing the potential for downtown parcels for mixed-use, transit-oriented growth, and placemaking initiatives. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested site development plan review, subject to conditions. Please note additional documents for protest and support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name and give us your address for the record, and then tell us a little bit about this project.
Good evening. Sheldon Colen, C-O-L-E-N, 2140 East Pebble Road, representing the applicant. The project in front of you has a first story of retail and four stories above that of the apartments. This project was designed previously, and we had had entitlements prior to seeing you today, and then it expired, and the client has asked me to get them restarted. And doing so, we also brought the project within the new title code per working with staff. And other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment, and I will pass it back to the commission starting with Commissioner Schlotman.
Yes, Chairwoman, this project was previously approved, and I'd love to see this get built downtown. It's exactly what we're looking for, and I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any comments? Nope, seeing none, please make your motion, Commissioner.
Yes, Chairwoman, on item number 33, Abeyance Renotification 25-0022SDR1, move to approve subject to staff's conditions, and you agree to all staff's conditions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Thank you. Please post. That motion carries.
And that is final action. Let's appeal to the city clerk in 10 days. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Item 34, Abeyance Renotification 25-0026, applicant, Taylor Morrison of Nevada LLC, owner, Phantom Group LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project request on the west side of Tonopah Drive approximately 442 feet north of Vegas Drive, Ward 5, Summers, Armstrong. Staff recommends approval on the land use entitlement project. 34A, Abeyance Renotification 25-0026VAR1, to allow a 22-foot lot width where 35 feet is the minimum required, Lot 24. 34B, Abeyance Renotification 25-0026VAR2, to allow a 25-foot lot width where 35 feet is the minimum required, Lot 25. 34C, Abeyance Renotification 25-0026VAR3, to allow a 25-foot lot width where 35 feet is the minimum required, Lot 26. 34D, Abeyance Renotification 25-0026TMP1, Tonopah, Vegas, for a proposed 27-lot, single-family residential subdivision. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, due to an existing easement, the applicant was unable to vacate. Staff supports the requested variances as this is an extraordinary circumstance that prohibits the applicant from meeting Title 19 requirements for lot widths. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested variances and tentative map. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Can you please state and spell your record and give us your address for the record, and then tell us a little bit about the project?
This is Rebecca Chiriboga, C-H-I-R-I-B-O-G-A, 6030 South Jones Boulevard, representing the applicant. You have a 27-lot subdivision before you. It complies with the current zoning residential compact. The project will be, all the lots will front public streets. They're full-width public streets, so there's parking on both sides. The, there is common elements that are in, planned for the subdivision, so there will be an HOA that maintains those, the landscape within these areas. The lots range in size from about 3,000 to 5,000 square feet, depending on which lot it is. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, ma'am. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? Come on down, grab a mic.
William McCurdy, Sr., 1117 Hart Avenue, Las Vegas, Devette, 9106, resident of Ward 5 for over 70 years. I like to commend this developer for wanting to put more rooftops in our community because we are in need of rooftops. Without rooftops, we cannot bring economic survival to the historic West Las Vegas, and I support the Congresswoman for her efforts to work with the developers to ensure that we get quality homes. And I'm against HOAs, but sometimes you have to have HOAs to make quality communities.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one else, I will close public comment. I will pass it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Menford.
Thanks, Madam Chair. From what the planning department was talking about, there was a, was there an easement issue with your first plans or something?
Yes, this was originally approved in 2022 with a slightly modified site layout. However, you see this shaded area here, there was an access easement that's private that was originally thought could be removed. However, there were some issues with the ownership of that easement, and they were unable to get it relinquished in a timely fashion. So we're coming forward with a site plan that can accommodate it mostly within the public right of way.
Okay. What's your, what's your price point?
Sorry, can you say that one more time?
What's the price point on the homes?
Mid 300s.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to, Madam Chair, I'd like to, if there's anybody else on...
Any other comments on this item? Okay, Commissioner Menford, please make your motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add a condition to 34D.
Okay, thank you. Please do.
In conjunction with the creation, declaration, and recordation of the subject common interest community, and prior to the recordation of the covenants, codes, and restrictions, CCNR, or conveyance of any unit within the community, the developer shall record a declaration of private maintenance requirements, DPMR, as a covenant on all associated properties and on behalf of all current and future property owners. The DPMR shall include a listing of all privately owned and/or maintained infrastructure improvements along with assignment of maintenance responsibility for each of the common interest community or the respective individual property owners, and shall provide a brief description of the required level of maintenance for privately maintained components. The DPMR must be reviewed and approved by the City of Las Vegas Department of Public Works prior to recordation, and shall include a statement that all properties within the community are subject to assessment for all associated costs should private maintenance obligations not be met, and the City of Las Vegas be required to provide for said maintenance. Also, the CCNR are to include a statement of obligation of compliance with the DPMR. Following recordation, the developer shall submit a copy of the recorded DPMR and CCNR documents to the City of Las Vegas Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Is that fine with you?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to our conditions and with the added conditions read on the record by staff.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Menford. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
Was that 34A through C?
Oh, yes, that is 34A through C. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, 34A through D. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Okay, please post. That motion carries.
And that will move on to City Council on May 21st.
Okay, let's move to item 36, Abeyance Renotification 25-0031, applicant, Contour Builders LLC, owner, Decatur Lake Need LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests located on the west side of Decatur Boulevard approximately 1,000 feet south of Lake Need Boulevard, Ward 5, Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project. 36A, Abeyance Renotification 25-0031VAR1, to allow a private street that does not conform to Title 19.04 Development Standards for Street Termini. 36B, Abeyance Renotification 25-0031TMP1, Contour Vesper, for a proposed 39-lot, single-family attached residential subdivision. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, staff finds the variance request to be a self-imposed hardship and outside the realm for granting variances. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the variance request and associated tentative map. Please note additional documents for protest and support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name and give us your address for the record, and then tell us briefly about the project.
I'm Greg Borgel, 3747 Heritage Avenue, here representing the proposed developer of this project, which probably is familiar to several of you because it has previously been presented and was approved through the process. But there were concerns by neighbors that the applicant agreed to pursue the alternatives of cutting off the access to Fairhaven. Fairhaven, switching exhibits here. Fairhaven is this street here, and the primary entry to the property always was Decatur. But neighbors came out and, notwithstanding the prior approval at the council level, the neighbors did ask that the developer attempt to resolve the no access to Fairhaven issue, and he has done so. And this is the variance that is required to fulfill that understanding with the neighbors. And in light of that, and in light of the fact that the project has separately been approved, and we appear to have resolved the question of access to Fairhaven, we would ask for your favorable action. And I believe that the neighbors are in fact here in some numbers, or perhaps they've gone home, to say that the project is acceptable.
Okay, thank you. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item? Or your neighbor? Okay, great. Go ahead, state your name and give us your address.
Madam Chairperson and commissioners, thank you for allowing us to speak here. My name is Joseph Gomez. I live at 1875 Fairhaven. I will be directly impacted because I... because I live basically across the street from the crash gate that they have so graciously accommodated us with because when they started to talk about this development, we wanted a solid brick wall across the whole thing and no ingress or egress onto Fairhaven. We didn't get that, but we got the next best thing, which is the, why we're here tonight. Completely agree and accept the, what is proposed tonight, although I do have a question. The community offers seven guest parking spaces. I know that there is, there's enough parking for each one of the thirty-nine units. However, with a pedestrian gate there, it's probably going to encourage people that don't want to go all the way to Decatur to get in, to just go in and out of that pedestrian gate and park on Fairhaven Street. So I'm asking for advice from you to how do we proceed to have either restrictions on parking on Fairhaven Street or no parking at all on Fairhaven Street, the main Fairhaven Street? I'm sure that all the neighbors would be in agreement. So any suggestions?
We'll go through public comment and the applicant can come up and we can discuss it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments, sir. Next?
Yeah, I'm Matthew Stewart. I live at nineteen twenty-one Fairhaven Circle, which is the cul-de-sac that's north of where Joseph lives. I ditto everything he says. We do have a problem on Fairhaven where it's a quiet street and, you know, a lot of times we have people park their motorhome. We have to complain. We have problems with semi parking on that street. So we just don't want more of an issue of people parking on that street and, you know, especially at overnight parking. That's probably my biggest concern. But I'm in, in favor of this, this project. I'm looking forward to seeing some more development in the area. So yes, I'm in agreement.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Michelle Tombari, M I C H E L E T O M B A R I. I've lived in the neighborhood for almost twenty-five years, and I spoke at the City Council meeting on November sixth when this project was discussed. All of the people who spoke were opposed because we didn't want all this new traffic coming onto Fairhaven. I am happy now that the developer has presented a great solution with this new application. I am in support of this new plan to use an emergency gate and not allow traffic onto Fairhaven. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
David Grant, eighteen eighty-five Fairhaven Street. We ask for your approval on this. Our main concern is no cars to and from onto Fairhaven. And appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sir, anyone else on public comment for this item, please come down to the podium.
Hi, good night. My name is Eduardo Nolasco. I live in nineteen sixty-one Fairhaven Street. Like everybody said, we got already problems with semis and, you know, a lot of traffic with the cars they leaving there, probably two, three days. We call the police and all that stuff and they come and, you know, it takes a lot of time to repair all those trucks, cars. And if it's going to affect us with more cars because it's not going to be parked enough for this building, it's good for them to have, you know, this building, you know, on our street. But I believe if we got, if they consider not to park, you know, those cars behind and on our, I'm sorry, on their own street, if they can use Decatur, I think we'll be okay for everybody, for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Anybody else for public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and applicants back up. Is there anything more you would like to add?
The neighbors had asked a question about Fairhaven, again of me while, while the meeting's been going on. And I advised them that because Fairhaven is a public street, that the developer of the neighboring property, my client, isn't in a position to enforce the city's rules on Fairhaven. However, I can say that I have the authority to volunteer that if the city determines that that, that Fairhaven should not be allowed for parking that, and that involves some cost of signage and whatnot, that that condition could be imposed on the applicant here to pay for the signage that would result on Fairhaven if that's a determination that Public Works makes and you make. And other than that, I probably should have mentioned going in because it's been an issue for the neighbors as well. But this is a for-sale project. This is a developer who only does for-sale. So this is not, although the character of the area may largely be rental, he does not build rental. And so that has seemed to be an issue as well.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'm going to pass this back over to the commissions, starting with Commissioner Munford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are these, are these townhomes or single-family units? I wasn't sure.
They are townhomes, sir. That's what the product here by Contour Developers, which is Mo Seback, he has built these properties or very similar properties all over town and tends to pick up parcels that might otherwise be undevelopable, but that he can do them as, as townhouses and, and has been successful.
Okay. And then I see, because I think the planning department, the concerns with that street was turnaround, but you put a cutout in there?
Yes. The issue raised, was raised when the prior version of the project was approved that staff said that a variance would be needed to not have a standard turnaround on the property. And that is this variance. So it's basically the variance that they were asked to do. And their engineers have approached to the various parties of interest. And the first solution is the crash gate, which the neighbors referenced earlier, which would allow in a true emergency, just the withdrawal of the gate and access for emergency vehicles. But in addition, there is on, for more standard situations, there is a turnaround being built right here at Fairhaven so that if someone got lost and/or a trash truck didn't want to do a three-point turn, that there would be an obvious solution being provided here on the property, which coincidentally, perhaps, is next to an additional landscape area, which was a natural fit for the parcel once it was designated as a turnaround facility.
Okay. Yeah, I used to, I used to manage the shopping center on the corner of Lake Mead and Decatur. And I drive by that lot. And I know there was a lot of squatters and homeless people that were making that, that kind of their temporary homes. So I think this would be a, I think this would be a good project for that area. It seems like the residents, you know, they, they are all for the project. You settled the, the issue with, you know, with the traffic going on to, is that Farland? Fairhaven?
Fairhaven, yes, sir.
Fairhaven Street. And, and I've driven down Fairhaven Street quite a bit when I was, I was, I would take that route if I didn't want to go down Decatur to go to the shopping center if I had to check something out. But I would, is there any other comment?
Commissioner, I just had a question for Mr. Pyatt possibly to address the question about parking on Fairhaven. Is there anything that we could do now or between now and City Council to address those parking concerns for Fairhaven?
Madam, again, Lucian Pyatt for the record, Madam Chairwoman. We can look into it. I, I would say, I wouldn't say we should remove parking this time on Fairhaven. We're going to have half-street improvements. And at the same time, the city can only enforce parking on the east half of Fairhaven because the west half is Clark County. We are requiring a pedestrian gate and our, you know, connectivity. So I would, at this time, I wouldn't recommend posting no parking on Fairhaven. It could be done. And maybe even after the project is built, if it's determined to be an issue, we could, city staff could, or prior to closing their project out, we could possibly add no parking to Fairhaven. But at this point, I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay. That was my question. I'll turn it back over to Commissioner Munford. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Schulten.
Yes, Chairwoman, through you, I, I'm just wondering if we could get the same condition on this one where there's a, since there's not a good cul-de-sac and there's just that little turnaround, a no outlet sign, and, and a condition that they post no parking signs on the turnaround. And they, that they do strike that, that way people don't just park in there. Would you be opposed to that, Mr. Borgel?
Yes, and if I didn't say so earlier, the applicant has accepted all of the other conditions that staff has, has proposed. And the posting of signs to control the location you're talking about on the turnaround, the applicant is perfectly happy to do that.
So, so Commissioner, so basically at the entrance, you're recommending to put a sign that there's no through traffic or there's no outlet?
Yes.
So, yeah, going into the property, if you could put something so people coming, driving on Decatur knows that, you know, they can't get through that property. It's residential.
So signage down at Decatur and up here as well?
Yeah, no parking and, you know, and your turnaround.
Yes, sir. I'm sure that's acceptable.
Okay. So if there's not?
Could you add that condition about no, the signage for no outlet and parking and read something in for us so that we can put it in the record?
Madam Chair, yes, those conditions would read, post no outlet signs at entryway of, is this a private street or is this going to be a public?
It's just private street.
Okay, so we would say, post no outlet signs at entryway of private street. And then for the painting of the curb at the end, we would have, paint the curbing red and post no parking signs on the non-standard street termini.
And that's agreeable.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, Madam Chair, I'd like to?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, one more thing too. Those two conditions would be added to the tentative map. So that would be added to two-five dash zero zero three one dash T M P one. And we also have an added condition for the D P M Rs for this site that we would need to add to the tentative map as well. And that would read, in conjunction with creation, declaration, and recordation of the subject common interest community and prior to recordation of covenants, codes, and restrictions, C C N R, or conveyance of any unit within the community, the developer shall record a declaration of private maintenance requirements, D P M R, as a covenant on all associated properties and on behalf of all current and future property owners. The D P M R shall include a listing of all privately owned and/or maintained infrastructure improvements, along with assignment and maintenance responsibility for each to the common entrance community or the respective individual property owners, and shall provide a brief description of the required level of maintenance for privately maintained components. The D P M R must be reviewed and approved by the City of Las Vegas Department of Public Works prior to recordation and shall include a statement that all properties within the community are subject to assessment for all associated costs should private maintenance obligations not be met, and the City of Las Vegas be required to provide for said maintenance. Also, the C C N R are to include a statement of obligation of compliance with the D P M R. Following recordation, the developer shall submit a copy of the recorded D P M R and C C N R documents to the City of Las Vegas Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, did you make your motion? Yes?
Yeah, I would, I would like to motion for approval of item number thirty-six, abeyance notification twenty-five dash zero zero three one through thirty-six A, thirty-six B, subject to all conditions with the added conditions read into the record by staff.
And you agree to all those conditions?
Yes, ma'am. I heard it for the first time tonight, but I heard it three or four times. So it looks standard to me.
Okay, thank you, sir. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Please post. That motion carries. Thank you very much, sir.
And that will move on to City Council on May twenty-first.
Thank you very much for your time. And if we don't see them again, we want to thank our neighbors for having worked with us on the issues.
Thank you, sir. Have a great night. Thanks to all the neighbors for coming out and being engaged. Okay, we are going to do, I'm going to call three items up at once. Thirty-seven, abeyance re-notification twenty-five dash zero zero three seven, applicant owner Canyon Walk LLC for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests located at the terminus of Centennial Parkway, west of Clark County, Ward four, Alan Polinsky. Staff recommends approval. Thirty-seven A, abeyance re-notification twenty-five dash zero zero three seven M O D one, to amend the Sky Summit design guidelines, master land use plan, phase map, and the parks agreement, including associated exhibits. Item thirty-eight, twenty-five dash zero zero three six T M P one, Sky Summit one twenty-five, applicant Olympia Companies, owner Canyon Walk LLC for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed five hundred and seventy lot, single-family detached residential subdivision, generally located southwest of the intersection of Centennial Parkway and the Sheep Mountain Parkway alignment, lots one point four, one point five, and one point six of Book one seventy-four, page fifty-two of Final Maps, and parcel two, file one thirty-one, page fifteen of Parcel Maps, Ward four, Alan Polinsky. Staff recommends approval. Item thirty-nine, twenty-five dash zero zero three eight, T M P one, Sky Summit, parcel one point eight, applicant TriPoint Homes, owner Canyon Walk LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed hundred and forty-seven lot, single-family attached and detached residential subdivision, generally located at the intersection of Centennial Parkway and the Sheep Mountain Parkway alignment, lot one point eight of Book one seventy-four, page fifty-two of Final Maps, Ward four, Alan Polinsky. Staff recommends approval. And since these are all aligned, staff, can we please have the reports on items thirty-seven through thirty-nine?
Madam Chair, the proposed modifications to the design standards provide more flexibility to home builders and will not negatively affect the master plan community as a whole as it develops. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the modification. The proposed tentative maps conform to Nevada revised statutes, Title nineteen, and the Sky Summit development standards, and has been approved by the Sky Summit project review team. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the tentative map as well. Please note additional documents of protest and support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Can you please state your name, spell it, give us your address for the record, and tell us about the project for items thirty-seven through thirty-nine?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Bob Gronhour, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the master developer, Sky Summit, on these matters that are before you. The first matter is the major modification to our design guidelines and some other documents within the development agreement. Staff is recommending approval. I want to thank your staff for working with us. More or less, we're refreshing some of these standards and guidelines that we're a part of from Sky, Sky Canyon and Sky Hills. So we made those changes. And as a matter of fact, we've added some additional open space within the master plan community. So we believe the changes are good overall for developers when they come here in the future. With that being said, we also have tentative maps, which is item number thirty-eight, where staff's recommending approval. I would ask on item thirty-nine, because we have a late change here with our proposed developer, that we're going to need to table item twenty-nine for discussions tonight, but have thirty-seven and thirty-eight to move forward.
Okay, so that's item thirty-nine, not twenty-nine?
Thirty-nine, yes. The tentative map thirty-nine, we're going to ask to be tabled. But thirty-seven and thirty-eight, we're going to ask you to approve per staff's recommendations.
Do you want it tabled or do you want it held? Do you want it tabled, or do you want it held?
Table. I, table.
Table. Okay. All right. Great. Anything else to add on the projects?
Not that I know of at the moment.
Okay, thank you. These items have been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on items 37 or 38? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and I will pass it back to the Commission, starting with Commissioner Kasama, but really quickly, staff, is there anything or director that we need to do, other than the applicant's request to table 39?
Yeah, so Madam Chair, I think what we'll do is we'll just, once we get there, we'll do each item on its own motion, and when we get to 39, the motion will be to table that item.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Director.
Madam Chair, we should open 39 for a public hearing prior to, prior to the motion?
I'm sorry.
We should open 39 for public hearing prior to the motion?
Should I open up 37 and 38? Okay, I got you. All right, all right. I know what we need to do. Okay, so we're going to, for items 37 and 38, I'm going to turn it back to the Commission, starting with Commissioner Kasama.
Thank you, Chair. Regarding this item, I have been long, long prior discussion with your board, and so I appreciate applicant and the cooperation. For any other considerations of residential, I am happy to make a motion to approve both items 37 and 37A and B, as well as item 38, which is applicable.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just a correction, not on B?
Yeah, 37B was...
It was already stricken.
Yeah, it was already stricken.
Okay. All right. So, anybody else, we'll clean this up real quickly, but anybody else on the Commission have substantive comments about 37 and its subparts and 38? Okay, seeing none, then Commissioner Kasama, just for clarification, since 37B was earlier stricken during housekeeping, your motion then would be on, to approve items 37, 37A, and 38. Is that correct?
Correct.
Subject to any and all conditions?
Madam Chair, if we, if we could just do separate motions, one on 37A and one on 38?
Okay. Then we will take them as separate motions. So, the motion then on the floor, Commissioner Kasama is 37, motion to approve 37 and 37A, subject to all conditions?
Correct.
Okay, great. There's a motion on the floor, please cast. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Please post. That motion carries.
And that will move on to City Council on May 21st.
Great. And then Commissioner Kasama, do you have a motion on item 38?
Yeah, I need a motion to approve item 38, 25-0036, subject to staff's...
Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Please post. And that item carries. Okay.
And Madam Chair, that item also will move on to City Council on May 21st.
All right, thank you. Sorry, Director. All right, so for item 39, this item was also, even though it's been tabled, this item was also noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on item 39? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. I will turn it back over to Commissioner Kasama for a motion on the applicant's request to table item 39.
Thank you, Chair. With that, I ask any comments from the Commission, and I am ready to make a motion to table item 39, 25-0038, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Please post. That motion to table carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay. All right, item 40, 24-0567SUP1, applicant Han Chang LLC, owner 8454 Stellar Drive LLC et al., for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed 4,992 square foot alcohol on premise full use at 2051 North Rainbow Boulevard, Suites 102 and 103, Ward 5, Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends approval. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the proposed use will operate within an existing shopping center meant to provide a variety of commercial uses. This proposed use is consistent with the uses allowed in the C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District, and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the special use permit request, subject to conditions. Please note additional documents for protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. If you could please give your names, state and spell your names, and give us your address for the record, and tell us a little bit about your project.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioner. My name is Wendy Lu, and represent this, it's for the restaurant, Japanese restaurant. We just want to change to the alcohol for...
Your name is spelled.
W E N D Y.
Can you speak into the microphone a little more clearly, please?
Yeah, thank you.
We can't hear you, ma'am. Can you speak a little more clearly?
Yeah, my name is Wendy Lu, and good evening, Chairman and Commissioner. It's W E N D Y L U. So I'm the, I present, I represent this applicant to, to, you do it.
Hi, my name is Kevin Zhang, K E V I N Z H A N G. I'm talking on behalf of our customer, Hansung LLC. They do own a Japanese restaurant. It's here in this plaza. We're moving to convert them from a wine and beer to a full use alcohol. This is because they do serve hibachi cooking in front of you, so we do want to be able to serve customers with full drink service.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Wang owned OJRA Restaurant in town, like Carr County, for eight locations. So he, he has like four CD, CD four liquor license already, so it's all approved, only this one is BNY, so that's the reason we want to change this to four liquor, too.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, this item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on item 40? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing, and I will turn it over to the Commission, starting with Commissioner Munford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Meeting with staff and stuff, it seems like this will be fine for this area and for this, for the shopping center. So I would like to make a motion for approval, if any other Commissioners have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. And you, the motion is subject to all conditions, correct?
Yes, correct.
And you agree to any and all of staff's conditions? Is that a, can you say yes?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, okay. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Okay. Please post. That motion carries. Motion carries, and the Director has stepped away.
Madam Chair, that item is final action tonight unless appealed to the city clerk within 10 days. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Item 41, 25-0032, applicant Shalom Buganam, owner ASD Group LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests, at the southwest corner of Owens Avenue and Henry Drive, Ward 3 Diaz, staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project. 41A, 25-0032, GPA1, from M Medium Density Residential to H High Density Residential. 41B, 25-0032ZON1, from R3 Medium Density Residential to R4 High Density Residential. 41C, 25-0032VAR1, to allow 32 parking spaces where 72 parking spaces are required, and to allow two handicap parking spaces where three handicap parking spaces are required. 41D, 25-0032VAR2, to allow a 70-foot residential adjacency setback where 102 feet is required. 41E, 25-0032SDR1, for proposed three-story 50-unit multifamily residential development with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, despite the proposed multifamily residential development representing much-needed multifamily housing within the East Las Vegas Neighborhood Planning Area and fulfilling the city's 2050 master plan goal for the provision of additional housing units, staff cannot support the requested variance of parking and residential adjacency requirements, and requested waivers for a reduction of perimeter landscape buffer requirements. These requirements, or these requests reinforce the unsuitability of the proposed development to the surrounding area. For these reasons, staff recommends denial of the proposed development and all associated applications. Please note additional documents for protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Can you please state and spell your name, and give us your address for the record, and tell us a little bit about this project?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nasco Belochchev, and my address is 1025 South First Street, Suite 140. I am the architect representing the property owner for this project. We're proposing a three-story multifamily development consisting of 50 units that are going to be a mix of one-bedroom and studio units, and the property is located off of East Owens and Henry Avenue, just a couple of blocks east of Pecos. It's a point seven, approximately point seven acre parcel, and we are providing 32 parking spaces where 72 are required, so we're asking for a parking variance. We are also asking to rezone the property from R3 to R4, as well as a general plan amendment from medium to high-density residential. In association with that, we also have the site development review, as well as a couple of landscape buffer reductions. So, switching over to the landscape plan, we're providing the correct number of trees and shrubs. We just want to push the building up a little bit closer to the eastern property line and northern property line, so we're asking for a reduction from 15 feet to 10 feet along the north, and 15 feet to 10 feet along the east as well. I believe there is an error in the, in the staff report that said 15 to 5, but it's actually a 10-foot buffer along the east. With that being said, we're, we're providing, you know, desert appropriate landscaping. Landscape is extremely important to, to the project. And then we're also requesting a variance for residential adjacency. Predominantly throughout this area, to the, to the west and to the south is all multifamily. There is one single-family residence across the street on, on Henry Avenue, and through this diagram here, you could see what part of the building here in the blue is clipping that residential adjacency, so we feel that's a pretty small impact on that neighbor, and we haven't gotten any, you know, complaints from, from them. Moving on to some of the renderings, we're designing a, you know, a great-looking building that's going to be a great addition to, to this neighborhood and offer some, some new housing options. So, you know, kind of paying respects to the mid-century modern architecture we have here in Vegas from the 50s and 60s, and taking inspiration from some other projects we've seen throughout town, like Share Downtown, and that was a big, big inspiration for, for this project. So, the facade is, is pretty simple, but every unit is, is kind of angled to create some, some dynamic rhythm throughout the facade, and all of these units actually point towards the strip, so the angles have some, some meaning behind them. And then you can see Sunrise Mountain to the east, just behind the property, with some great views that way as well. And there's elevation of, of the, the west facade. This is the east facade. And then this is kind of a top-down aerial perspective, so you can get a better idea of what's, what's around there. So you can see the single-family residence across the street on Henry, but to the, this is south and this is west. This is predominantly multifamily, that's, you know, not as high-density as this, but we, we feel that this project, you know, is a little bit of a higher, higher density. It could, it could be a pivotal project to help redevelop this, this area in the future.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment, and I will turn it back over to the Commission, starting with Commissioner Schlotman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, just a couple of questions. The dumpster, it looks like it may be recessed into the building on the south side, is that correct?
Correct. It's, it's part of the, the building right here, so we'll have a trash chute within the building to drop into the dumpster.
Okay, cool. And, you know, I've, I've looked at this project, I mean, we've, we've gone down to like point five spaces, parking spaces per unit, especially when we're dealing with studios, and we're, we're above that, so on this particular project. So, I don't have a big problem with the, with the parking, considering we, every one of these are, are studios, and some of the setbacks, I know that there's, you know, the heat island effect and all of that, and so the trees are important, and where you are minimizing, there's been some talk about where you're minimizing some of the buffers and the landscape buffers, that they might not grow. I mean, I feel that they can grow. We, we put them underneath tree grates and all sorts of stuff all the time, but just as long as, as long as your client realizes that these conditions of approval, when they go on, they go on for the life of the project, and I remember people coming back, projects were approved in the 80s, and then they cut down their trees, and, you know, five years ago, they come back to us for a review of condition, trying to get rid of their trees, and we denied it. So, just make, make sure they know that, maintain their trees and, and, and keep up with the landscape. And I, I do like the fact that you do have the parking lot fingers in there, too, with the trees. That usually is the first thing that gets cut, so we can get more parking spaces in, in there, but I think it adds a nice touch and also adds some cool into the vehicles parked around it. So, I have no other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Seeing none, if you would like to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, on item 41, 25-0032, 41A through C, A through E, a move to approve, subject to staff's conditions, and you agree to all of staff's conditions.
We agree to staff's conditions.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please post, and that motion carries, and...
Madam Chair, that item will move on to City Council on May 21st, 2025.
Great, thank you. At this time, I would like to take a five-minute break, so we will be on break, and then next up, we will have item 43. Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Sorry? I was going to ask her, is the motion with, ma'am, the motion on the floor is to approve it. Do you agree to all staff's conditions?
I apologize. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Rogan, Commissioner Kasama have cast their votes. Please post. That motion carries.
And Madam Chair, that item will move on to City Council on May twenty-first, 2025.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Item forty-four, twenty-five dash zero zero four-five, applicant Ali Keva, owners OPS One LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project, requests generally located at the northwest corner of Sahara Avenue and Fort Apache Road, Ward Two Seaman. Staff recommends approval on the land use entitlement project, forty-four A, twenty-five dash zero zero four-five SUP One, for a proposed mixed-use development, forty-four B, twenty-five dash zero zero four-five S D R One, for a major amendment to an approved plot plan and building elevation review, Z dash zero one three nine dash eighty-eight, parenthetical sixteen, for a proposed five-story mixed-use development with two-hundred-and-fifty-two multifamily residential units and two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty square feet of commercial floor area in conjunction with an existing shopping center. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, the proposed mixed-use development will create a transit-oriented development that supports an environment suitable for a light rail or bus rapid transit line, thereby helping to address overall traffic congestion for Sahara Avenue and is an example of infill development. As a result, staff finds the proposed development will be harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area and recommends approval of the requested special use permit and site development plan review. Please note additional documents of protest and support were received after publication.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. If you can please state and spell your name and give us your address for the record, and then tell us about the project.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioner Stephanie Gronauer, nineteen-eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Gronauer is G-R-O-N-A-U-E-R. This property on the overhead, you can see, this is located in Village Square at the corner of Sahara and Fort Apache. In this back portion that's highlighted in yellow was the movie theater. I don't know if you all ever went to the movies there, but it was a great little movie theater. Unfortunately, it closed back in two thousand twenty-three and has not reopened, and so this project is proposed to create a mixed-use development within that existing commercial shopping center. The site is currently zoned C-One, which allows for the mixed-use development. There's multifamily to the north as well as to the west of the site, and we're proposing two-hundred-and-fifty-two multifamily units within this area here. This is the site plan that's before you. This was the entrance to the movie theater area right here, so that will be the leasing office and the entrance to the multifamily project with the two-hundred-and-fifty-two units to the west and to the east of it. There'll be gated parking for the residents in the back and on the sides, and then also shared parking within the center. The applicant is going to be adding trees to the existing site. There's fifty-two thirty-six-inch box trees that will be added to supplement the landscaping in and around the project. Also, at the commissioner or the chairperson's request, we're happy to add twenty trees within this back parking lot area, parking diamonds, so that they'll further eliminate the heat island effect in that area and also be a nice amenity for the residents back there, and I know staff has that condition that we're willing to offer today. Other than that, the use permits are just, because it is infill development, normally the commercial would face the right-of-way. This is obviously in the back of the center, so it can't face the right-of-way. Also, the parking is typically required to be behind the building or on the sides. There's existing parking within the center, so that's impossible to meet as well. Staff supports those use permits and the site development plan review and recommend approval, and we would ask for your approval this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on item forty-three? Okay, seeing none, I will close this item for public comment and turn it back over to the Commissions, starting with Commissioner Walsh.
Thanks, thanks, Stephanie. The provision was put in for the additional trees, right? So, that's...
Yes.
Pretty much it. There's no other issues I have here, other than the motion, unless anybody else has something?
Madam Chair, I'd like to read that condition into the record for the clerks.
Sure, let's just make sure nobody else on the Commission has any comments? Nope? Okay, great. Please, Ms. Eddo, read that condition.
Twenty parking lot landscape diamonds with thirty-six-inch box-sized shade trees shall be added in the parking lot north of the building.
Thank you very much. So, go ahead, Commissioner Walsh.
That's a motion to approve item forty-three, twenty-five dash zero zero four-three, just V A R One. Sorry, I get the wrong number there. It's item forty-four, twenty-five dash zero zero four-five, and with all conditions on that, motion to approve, please.
And Madam Chair, just for clarification, the condition will be added to forty-four B, the S D R.
Okay, would that be forty A, B, and C, or just A and B? The additional one?
The tree condition is added to B, and your motion would be for A and B.
Okay, so move.
Okay, and you do agree to all staff's conditions? We just didn't hear it?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So, there are a motion on the floor for approval on item forty-four and its subparts. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Great, please post. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Yep, you have a great night.
And Madam Chair, that, those items are final action unless appealed to the city clerk within ten days. Thank you.
Thank you. Item forty-five, twenty-five dash zero zero four-six, S D R One, applicant owner Good Cluck West LLC, for possible action on the land use entitlement project request for a pro-
Madam Chair, I'd like to read that condition into the record for the clerks.
Sure. Let's just make sure nobody else on the commission has any comments? Nope. Okay, great. Please, Ms. Edoz, read that condition.
Twenty parking lot landscape diamonds with thirty-six inch box-sized shade trees shall be added in the parking lot north of the building.
Thank you very much. So go ahead, Commissioner Walsh.
Motion to approve item forty-three, twenty-five dash zero-zero-four-three, dash V A R one. Sorry, I get the wrong number there. It's item forty-four, twenty-five dash zero-zero-four-five. And with all conditions on that, motion to approve, please.
And Madam Chair, just for clarification, the condition will be added to forty-four B, the S D R.
Okay. Would that be forty A, B, and C, or just A and B? The additional one?
The tree condition is added to B and your motion would be for A and B.
Okay. So move.
Okay. And you do agree to all staff conditions? We just didn't hear it.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So there are motion on the floor for approval on item forty-four and its subparts. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Great. Please post. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Yep. You have a great night.
And Madam Chair, that, those items are final action unless appealed to the city clerk within ten days. Thank you.
Thank you. Item forty-five, twenty-five dash zero-zero-four-six S D R one. Applicant owner Good Clark West LLC for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed two-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty square foot restaurant with drive-through and a three-thousand-sixty-seven square foot office building development with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer requirements at the southeast corner of Martin Luther King Boulevard and Cary Avenue, Ward five Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends approval. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the proposed development as designed is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding and future land development in the area. It also adheres to minimum Title nineteen development standards except for a landscape waiver, which staff finds to be minor in nature. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested site development plan review, subject to conditions. Please note additional documents for support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Could you please state and spell your name for the record? Give us your address and then tell us a little bit about the project.
Yes. Good evening. Steven Winfield, S T E P H A N W I N F I E L D, located at six-eight-six-five Antler Court. This is a three-thousand-square-foot restaurant with both sit-down and drive-through service, and we agree with staff recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on item forty-five? Come on down, sir.
Yes, William McCurdy. I live in the Vegas Heights area where that proposed project is being built right across the street from Martin Luther King Center. That is a site of a Sunrise Cafe back in the day, so I'm very happy that they're developing that area. That area has set vacant for the last twenty-five years that I can remember, so I'm very happy that they're developing that area.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll close public comment on item forty-five and turn it over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Munford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did you have any, did you have a neighborhood meeting or anything?
Oh, sorry. Could you please repeat that?
Did you have any neighborhood meeting?
No, that was not required for this project.
Okay. I was just, this council lady, councilwoman was asking. Yeah, I think that this is a good project for that, for that area. Would like to make a motion if, is there any other comments from any of the commissioners?
Seeing no other comments on this item from the commission, please make your motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add a condition to this, please.
Oh, yes, sir. Please, go ahead.
All right. Prior to the exercising of the site development plan review as expressed in Title nineteen point one-six point one hundred J, developer shall be required to record a declaration of private maintenance requirements, D P M R. As a covenant on all associated properties and on behalf of all current and future property owners, the D P M R shall include a listing of all privately owned and/or maintained infrastructure improvements, along with the assignment of maintenance responsibility for each of the subject site's landscape areas, including but not limited to perimeter landscape buffers, parking lot landscaping, and foundation landscaping, and shall provide a brief description of the requested level of maintenance for privately maintained components, including but not limited to building elevations, parking lot striping, trash enclosures, and driveway pans. The D P M R must be reviewed and approved by the City of Las Vegas Department of Community Development prior to the exercising of the site development plan review as expressed in Title nineteen point one-six point one hundred J, and shall include a statement that all properties within the subject sites are subject to assessment for all associated costs should the private maintenance obligations not be met and the City of Las Vegas be required to provide for said maintenance. Following recreation, developer shall submit a copy of the recorded D P M R document to the City of Las Vegas Department of Community Development. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Commissioner Munford, your motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to all conditions. With the added conditions read into the record by staff, that would be approval for item forty-five, twenty-five zero-zero-four-six dash S D R one.
And you agree to all staff conditions?
Yes.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Okay, great. Please post. And that motion carries.
And Madam Chair, that item will move to City Council on May twenty-first, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item forty-six, twenty-five dash zero-zero-five-six S U P one. Applicant Short Line Gaming LLC, owner Ninety-five LLC for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed gaming establishment, restricted use, one to five machines, with waivers to allow an eighty-foot distance separation from an individual care center licensed for more than twelve children and a two-hundred-and-fifty-five-foot distance separation from a church slash house of worship, where four-hundred feet is required at six-seven-zero-two West Cheyenne Avenue, Ward five Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends approval. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, staff finds the requested waivers of distance separation will not negatively impact the surrounding protected uses, and the proposed use can be conducted in any manner that is harmonious and compatible with that surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the special use permit. Please note additional documents of protest and support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. If you could please state and spell your name and give us your address for the record and tell us a little bit about this project.
Yes, my name is Liz Lutz. I'm here for Short Line Gaming, seven-three-three-zero East Gate Road, Suite one-twenty Henderson, Nevada. We're proposing the gaming establishment within a seven-eleven. It's had gaming before. It got a new franchisee, so we had to switch and get a whole new license, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I am going to close public comment and I am going to turn it back over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Munford.
I feel that this is, this is fine and would like to move for approval per staff, you know, per staff recommendation. Are any of the commissioners that have any, any comment?
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other comments from the commission, no comments from staff. All right.
I would like to make a motion for approval, subject to all conditions, the, for item forty-six, twenty-five dash zero-zero-five-six S U P one, special use permit.
And ma'am, you agree to all of staff's conditions?
Yes.
Okay, great. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Okay. Please post. And that motion carries.
And Madam Chair, that item will move on to City Council on May twenty-first, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number forty-seven, twenty-five dash zero-zero-five-nine V A R one. Applicant owner Las Vegas Clark County Library District for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow an animated wall sign that does not conform to Title nineteen point oh-eight development standards for size and residential protection at eighteen-sixty-one North Martin Luther King Boulevard, Ward five Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends denial. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing an animated wall sign that fails to comply with Title nineteen development standards. In view of the absence of any hardships imposed by the site's physical characteristics, it is concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature and is hereby outside the realm of NRS Chapter two-seven-eight for granting variances. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested variance. Please note additional documents for protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Would you please state and spell your name and give us your address for the record and tell us about this project?
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. My name is Melvin Green, G R E E N, without the E, five-oh-one-nine-five, South Arango Road, Suite one-oh-three, eight-nine-one-one-three.
John Vino, General Services Director for the Las Vegas Library District.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are excited about this, this project here. It's a forty-three-thousand-square-foot two-story library that sits on approximately five acres. We went through a S D R review a couple of years ago, was approved, and in that review we had a LED sign. And so it was stated that we need to go and get a application for that signage. So we applied for it and we were denied because of the fact that we were fifteen percent over the ten percent requirement for facade, as well as within two-hundred feet of a residential property. So we just wanted to, to come before you to give, give an idea of what we wanted to do. This, this project here in terms of the signage itself has been reviewed by the staff. We looked at the location of the sign. This sign is not just on the side of a building or a freestanding sign. It is integrated into the building itself. So if you looked at the north side, we created a buffer that sets the sign back on the, on the building versus having it protruding out. We also have a side where it's integral signage that goes into the south side of the, of the facade as well. And then we created a canopy on the top that will also integrate the sign in itself. One of the questions is on the, the location of the sign itself. We are approximately a hundred and sixty feet from the property line. There is a major primary, primary arterial street that is MLK, is very busy, so we're, we're saying that it doesn't need to be a single-family residential area that we are going to be impacting because eventually the church that owns the property is going to get this rezoned to commercial, which we're in the process of working with them right now. We're going to submit the application prior to the twenty-fourth, which is the deadline for the pre-application submittal. So hopefully this will all go away in a, in a couple of months. This single-family property is in, is not in a great area because of the fact that there's a lot of traffic, and so it would be very detrimental to the people that are going to live in that, that neighborhood to be able to access MLK when it's a very, very busy street. And we also show the, the radius, if we were to, if we were to provide a radius of two-hundred feet, it's only going to affect a small portion of, of the property in this area here. So again, we feel that this would be a, a, a project that would be conducive to what we, we want to do. If you look at the general plan, it's, it's called for T O C two as future use. With the fact that the church wants to re-rezon, this is going to give us opportunity to, to provide the necessary distances since it will be commercial. And then the, the last thing I just wanted to state is that we got approval from the Architectural Review Committee with the Enterprise Park, as well as we got a support letter, which I like to enter into the records, from Evergreen Missionary Baptist Church. They're in support of the project. And with that said, we respectfully request your approval. And also, we want to make this a final item since this project is under construction and we're approximately sixty-five percent complete, and we're looking to have the building completed by October of this year.
Okay. Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. I see there are some members of the public wishing to make comment. Gentlemen, come on down, grab a microphone and share your thoughts.
Hi. My name is Jerry Washington. I'm the trustee chairperson at Evergreen Missionary Baptist Church, and we are in appliance with this project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Washington. Sir?
My name is Grunell Martin. I'm an officer of Greater Evergreen Missionary Baptist Church also, and we basically support this project.
Thank you, sir.
My name is William McCurdy, senior. I support this project because of several reasons. Number one, that West Las Vegas, historical West Las Vegas do not have any L D signs located nowhere like other parts of the city and other parts of the valley. And if you talk about a hardship, I think it's a hardship on Lake Mead, when you go east and west on Lake Mead, where we have some home developments there, and that's a busy, busy street. Martin Luther King is a north-south egress route, truck route, which have over a hundred thousand cars traveling that road a day. Right across the street from the library currently is the property that Evergreen owned that is zoned residential. But Evergreen has need to change the zoning from residential to commercial. The church has no intentions, according to the leadership of the church, to ever to develop that into a single-family or multifamily residence across the street. On the corner of Jimmy Street, just across the street from the library is a commercial building. And to the south side of that street, which is called Dolittle, is another church that's located on that corner, which has no residential neighborhoods. So across the street from that property, also next to the library, is the United States Post Office. So currently, there's no homes developed in that area, and due to the project there in the process of rezoning or trying to get the property rezoned to commercial, that will eliminate the problem.
Thank you, Mr. McCurdy. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment, call the applicant back up, and see if there's anything you'd like to add.
If I could, I, this has been a joint project with the city. We can't speak highly enough. I would point out that architectural review from the City of Las Vegas at schematic, at design, at C D was required, and nothing was brought up until this time, so it's a little bit of a shock to us to find out, you know, staff's nonapproval, considering this was kind of a, a pretty active joint project on behalf of the district, so appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I will go ahead and pass it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Munford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I toured the property library about a month ago, and I think this, this project, this, the, the library project is going to be another project for Ward five that's going to add a lot of, a lot of positive benefit to the community. You know, it's, it's not your typical library. It's going to be a lot of, lot of things that are going to benefit the people in this community. And I've, I was on a phone call with the, the church that owns the land across the street, and they, they indicated to me that they want to switch the zoning of that property to commercial, which, you know, with that many cars and the amount of commercial that's being developed on MLK, you know, me personally, I think that would be a great idea in terms of, of them moving that to commercial. I think the, the big challenge that, that planning staff had with this was that residential across the street. And so if it, I'm, I'm pretty confident that the, the church is going to move forward and switch that over to commercial, and if that's the case, I don't find any problem with that, with that type of signage. Did you make some modifications in terms of setting the sign back a little bit? I see that it's set back a little bit now, or?
Yeah, we actually didn't make any modifications. It was already set back a hundred and fifty-nine feet. And again, like I said, we integrated it within the building, so it's not looking just like it's plastered on the building as well.
Yeah, and I, I like that it's set back a little bit, especially I think that'll help with the traffic going by, that it kind of sets back like that with the, kind of the barriers around it, like it's framed.
Sure.
But I would, I would, I would like to make a motion for approval if any of the other commissioners have questions.
Okay. Commissioner Salvia?
Thank you. Just to stay with past practice, again, I would just want to implement doing hours on it, just like I had stated earlier, just to stay with consistency. Other than that, I 100% support it, but I'd definitely like to see some hours on it. And then, my second question would be more of a question. Are you just going to be advertising the stuff that's going to be going on at the library? Or do you plan on advertising for any other business?
I'll answer the first question. The hours are going to be from 8:00 in the morning to 8:00 at closing for the library. And then, I'll defer the other question to John.
It's not for commercial advertising. It's really to promote the programs within the library, I mean, and community events. So, it's not necessarily just for library events. So, if there's other community events that we can promote, but it wouldn't be commercially.
Is that a condition?
Would you like, Madam Chair, through you, would you like a condition read into the record for the hours of illumination to be limited?
Yes, please.
Do you have a suggestion for at nighttime when to shut it down?
The applicant just basically stated that they were fine with from 8:00 to 8:00.
Okay, Madam Chair, that condition would read, "The animated wall sign shall not be illuminated between the hours of 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM daily."
Gentlemen, are you okay with that condition?
I don't know when we could go that way. We, the library normally closes at 8:00, but because we have a very active event center within the space that we're building for the community, there was a suggestion that we'd be allowed to keep it advertising the event that might be going on slightly longer. So, if you would consider 10:00, I think would be reasonable for events outside of the library.
I'm fine, I was fine with 6:00 to 10:00, like past practice.
Yeah, schools and the other things, sure.
That works for 6:00 to 10:00.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
6:00 AM, Brian.
Okay, Madam Chair, so then, that would read, "The animated wall sign shall not be illuminated between the hours of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM daily."
Okay, and that is an acceptable condition?
Yes, yes.
Fantastic. Commissioner Munford?
All right, so I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to all conditions, and also add conditions read into the record by staff. If that's okay with the applicant, I'd like to move for approval.
Thank you.
For item, that's item 47, 25-00259-VAR1 variance.
Thank you, Commissioner Munford. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Please post, that motion carries.
And Madam Chair, that will move on to City Council on May 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 48, 25-0060-SUP1, applicant Armando Santiago Delgado, owner, VIV Rancho Pavilion DELC et al., for possible action on the land use entitlement project request for proposed 2,100 square foot alcohol on-premise full use with waiver to allow a 0-foot distance separation from an individual care center licensed for more than 12 children and a 60-foot distance separation from a church/house of worship where 400 feet is required at 721 North Rancho Drive, Ward 5, Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends approval. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, the proposed use is consistent with the uses allowed in the C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the special use permit. Please note additional documents of protest were received after publication.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, sir. Can you please state and spell your name and give us your address for the record, and then tell us about your project?
I'm Gaspar Andrade, G.S.P.A.R., 3200 Arbeville Street. Our restaurant is another Mexican restaurant, and the reason we're asking for the license is because we need to compete with our neighbors. We have a couple of restaurants down north of Rancho, and they all have alcohol, you know? Who doesn't like Mexican food with a nice cold margarita, right? So, in order for us also to compete and keep our doors open, we need to have this licensing. We request in your approval if it's possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and pass it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Munford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. From my understand, this might have been, this location, our site, might have been approved for alcohol before, but I think, you know, I recommend that we go with staff's approval, recommendation approval. Any other commissioners have any questions?
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, Commissioner Munford, if you're prepared to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to all conditions, for item 48, 25-0060-SUPI, Special Use Permit.
Thank you, sir. Do you agree to all staff conditions?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Please post, that motion carries.
And that item will go to City Council on May 21st.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, item number 50, 25-0065, applicant TriPoint Homes, owner, CSWDE382LLC et al., for possible action on the following land use entitlement project request generally bounded by the Ruston Road, Larry McBride Street, Sheep Mountain Parkway and Trails, End Avenue, street alignments, Ward 6, Bruny. Staff recommends approval on 25-0065-GPA1 and ZON1. Staff recommends denial on 25-0065-VAR1, VAC1 and TMP1. 50A, 25-0065-GPA1 from PCD Planned Community Development to ML Medium Low Density Residential. 50B, 25-0065-ZON1 from U undeveloped PCD Planned Community Development. General Plan designation to RSL Residential Small Lot. 50C, 25-0065-VAR1 to allow proposed private gated streets that do not conform to Title 19.04 Complete Street Standards for Street Termini. 50D, 25-0065-BAC1 for petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements and portions of public right-of-way, Trails End Avenue and Ruston Road. And 50E, 25-0065-TMP1, Rocky and SMP for proposed 77-lot, single-family detached residential subdivision with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, staff finds the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning are appropriate for the area, and this land use category and zoning, as this land use category and zoning district accommodates single-family detached residences and is consistent with the intent of the Kyle Canyon Special Area Plan. Staff recommends approval of the general plan amendment and rezoning. Staff does not support stub-street termini and supports Complete Street Standards. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the variance, vacation, and tentative map. Please note additional documents of support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Would you please state and spell your name?
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here tonight on behalf of TriPoint. The site is located just to the north of Kyle Canyon and on the east side of Sheep Mountain Parkway. This is the site plan for the site. This is where Rocky sits, right here. So, there's a site to the north and a site to the south. Both are gated. We have included a little park, open space area, that has a soccer area for, with goals for kids or adults to practice their goals. Then, we have a more active open space here with chucker tables and a bag toss. And then, in addition, along this side, we also have like an exercise station area. We do have a couple of stub-streets, which requires the variance, but we don't have too many houses that front onto those stub-streets, and so, we would ask for your consideration in approving that. This blue area is a retention or detention basin, which is common with the projects that are out in this area for now, so that's what that blue area depicts. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lazovich. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. I will turn this item back over to the commission, starting with me. And on that retention basin, Ms. Lazovich, we've had this in the past, like you noted, it's common in this area. I think we had previously discussed a condition related to density, should that ever be turned over and able to be developed. So, is there a condition that can be read into the record for that?
Madam Chair, the basin is approximately 1.03 acres. If we were to match the density of the existing neighborhood, which is 4.35 dwelling units per acre, that would allow up to 4.22 or four homes on that basin to be approved. So, we could add the condition that if, and that would read, "If in the future, the onsite detention basin is determined by the city and engineer to no longer be needed, a maximum of four additional lots could be added." Thank you.
And are you, is that, you prove that condition? You okay with that?
We agree with that condition.
Okay, thank you so much. And then, I know you've got rolled curbs already planned. Do you have 20-foot driveways already planned?
We do. We know what is expected out here in Ward 6.
Thank you so much for working with us. And I also just want to say, thank you for the continued innovations in the little green spaces that we're trying to develop in your TriPoint subdivisions, because what we really hope for are communities, not just buildings, neighborhoods, not just subdivisions. So, we really want to thank you for bringing this forward. And anybody else have anything on this? Otherwise, I'm prepared to make a motion. Okay, so on items 50, 25-0065.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. The condition I read into the record would be added to the tentative map, so that would be added to 25-0065-TMP1. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Eddos. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to approve item 50, and its subparts 50A through 50E, subject to all conditions. Ms. Lazovich, you agree to all conditions?
We do.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Great, please post, that carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Lazovich.
Thank you.
And that item will move on to City Council on May 21st.
Have a safe flight back to Carson. Item 53, 25-0080-SDR1, applicant, owner, Nevada Health and Bioscience Asset Corporation, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a major amendment to an approved site development plan review, 24-0161-SDR1, for proposed reduction in square footage of an approved medical office development with waivers of Title 19.09 Form-Based Code Development Standards. At the southeast corner of Pinto Lane and Shadow Lane, Ward 1, Knutson, staff recommends denial. May we have the staff report, please?
Michelle Bridgetta, 888, sorry, did you say introduce myself?
I'm sorry, madam.
No, sorry, sorry, we are waiting for staff to give us their report first. That's okay.
Madam Chair, staff finds that the applicant is proposing to underdevelop the subject site in a manner that does not ultimately support the Vision 2045 Downtown Master Plan. As such, staff recommends denial of the site development plan review application. Please note that there is a revised site, landscape, and floor plan and elevations in your supplemental packet. Please note additional document of support was received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, please, ma'am, state and spell your name, and give us your address for the record, and tell us about the project.
Sure. Michelle Bridgetta, 8882 Spanish Ridge Avenue, architect for NHBC, Nevada Health and Bioscience.
I'm Kurt Schreiner, S.C.H.R.I.N.E.R., address 3152 Alaprima Avenue, representing NHBC on their behalf tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, some of you may remember our application previously. Unfortunately, the four-story scenario came in over budget for Nevada Health, and we work with them to make sure the project still happens, but instead of a four-story building, we're now a two-story facility with a similar footprint. And as far as site, concept for the site, all that remains the same, right? But our challenge is, we're no longer a four-story. If you want, I can go through the site a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, so, building location, in the same spot. Pinto is located towards the north here of the property. It's a laboratory building with some office components to support the lab use. The tenant will be UMC. So, we're making sure that we're creating some synergies with the existing Kirk Kerkorian campus. So, the entry that relates to Kirk Kerkorian, the medical school, is off of the main campus, and then, entry to the blood bank remains in the same location. That's mainly it.
All right, thank you.
As far as architecturally, we believe we still have a nice building, formally, proportionally, still trying to introduce some graphics to break up the mass, introducing metal panels, graphic that represents NHBC and ties into the UMC colors as well, simple facade. This is the entry to the Blood Donation Center, and then, that's what the building sets up to be within the internal courtyard of the campus.
Okay, thank you. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and turn this over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Rogan.
Thank you, Chair. We took this in the past, took the pledge of engagement, our prior approval, so I'm ready to make a voting for approval, unless you can refer it.
Anybody else? I do have one probably stupid question.
No.
If, for some reason, there was additional funding in the future, are you able to, is it going to be constructed in a way that you would have the structural ability to like, go, continue going vertical?
So, not at this moment, because that would impact the way that we designed the structural. We did consider that, but it couldn't play into this project at the time.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Rogan, if you would like to make a motion?
Thank you. This is regarding the investigation. Item 953, Project 25-0060-SUP, made a motion for approval, subject to all of the staff conditions.
And you agree to all staff conditions?
Yes.
Great, thanks. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Please post, motion carries.
And that will move on to City Council on May 21st.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Item 54, 25-0081, applicant, Schulman Development, owner, Union Pacific Railroad Company, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project request at the northeast corner of Charleston Boulevard and Grand Central Parkway, Ward 1, Knutson, staff recommends approval on the land use entitlement project. 54A, 25-0081-SUP1 for proposed 250-foot tall building within the 200-foot Airport Overlay District. 54B, 25-0081-SUP2 for proposed valet parking use. 54C, 25-0081-SUP3 for proposed 260,400 square foot alcohol on-premise full use. 54D, 25-0081-SDR1 for proposed 18-story, 254-room hotel development with waivers of Appendix F Interim Downtown Las Vegas Development Standards. And 54E, 25-0081-TMP1, Eterno Resort Mixed Use for a one-lot commercial subdivision including condominium units. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, staff has determined the proposed hotel, health club, and medical uses are consistent with the long-range goals for the downtown Las Vegas Civic and Business District, and can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of all associated entitlements. Please note there is a revised staff report in your supplemental packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Can you please state and spell your name, and give us your address for the record, and tell us about the project?
Yes, good evening. Liz Olson, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive.
Yes, good evening, Liz Olson, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. You saw this project several months ago. Our client now has a new partner, so we have changed it up just a little bit, but the overall premise is still the same. We are located on Grand Central and Charleston, two hundred and fifty-four unit hotel condominium project and a medical institute. We've made two main changes to the project. Our building on the east side, along the railroad tracks, was originally our medical building. This is now a standalone seven-story parking garage, and we have incorporated all of our medical square footage into our main building, which you see there in the blue. In order to do that, we had to increase our building from seven stories to eighteen stories, so we are now looking at a high-rise building. But again, overall premise is the same. Will be a great addition to this corner. I'd really like to appreciate staff on this quickly, because they have been continuing to work with us on these revisions, and they've been really great moving forward with this. I believe there is one condition change from Public Works, but other than that, again, appreciate staff and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Olson. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public hearing, and I will pass it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Rogan.
Thank you, Chair. There's not much more to say. I'm, this is the third time we've seen this project here, and each time I've thought it's a different project. So, opinion has changed. I'm ready to make a motion for approval, and then there's further comment.
Madam Chair, Lucian Piot Public Works. I do need to modify the condition for item fifty-four D, condition number thirty, and just replacing the second sentence to read, "The developer shall construct a retaining wall along the Charleston Boulevard right-of-way to facilitate the future elimination of slope paving, including a dedicated right-turn lane, if required in the approved traffic impact analysis, to meet the approval of the city engineer and city traffic engineer respectively, and the Nevada Department of Transportation, N dot." And that has been also submitted to the city clerks.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Seeing none, okay. Commissioner Rogan, then, just, can you please just restate your motion?
Sure. With regard to agenda item fifty-four, project twenty-five dash zero zero eight one, make a motion for approval, subject to staff conditions and the amended condition read into the record.
And that's for fifty-four A through E?
Yes, fifty-four A through D.
Okay, thank you very much. There is, oh, and do you agree to all staff conditions, Ms. Olson?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Kasama.
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Please post. That motion carries.
And that's final action tonight, unless appeal to the city clerk in ten days.
Thank you very much. Item fifty-five, twenty-five dash zero zero five five T X T one, applicant, owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to amend L V M C nineteen point one two point one two oh, to adjust the standards for on-premise signs with off-premise messaging that may be approved in connection with convention, convention facilities. Staff has no recommendation. May I please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, this request proposes an amendment to modify the floor space requirement for convention facilities from between two hundred and fifty thousand square feet and, and five hundred thousand square feet, to a minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, effectively removing the upper limit. In addition, this request removes the provision prohibiting such signs from facing or being visible from freeway or expressway travel lanes. Staff has no recommendation of this text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Thank you for coming down, sir. Please state your name and spell it, and your address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair, John Leleu, L E L E U, sixty thirty-seven South Ford, Apache, here on behalf of World Market Center, Las Vegas. World Market Center is in full support of this text amendment. The best way to describe this text amendment, other than the, the way staff just described it, which is perfect, is to describe what it is not. And it is not a, an authorization for more signs. What it is, is a, it gives large convention centers the ability to carry off-premise messaging on their current on-premise sign entitlements. So really, this text amendment is about content, it's not about more signs. And, and again, the Planning Commission, City Council maintains all control over the signage on the large convention facilities through the master sign plan amendment process. And this ordinance, if passed, will still subject the, the sign holders to all state, local, and federal laws. So World Market Center is in full support. We still thank staff for its help, and we have, we're open, open ourselves up for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Lazovich?
Good evening again, Jennifer Lazovich, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive. One question, and I appreciate Mr. Leleu's testimony. We've been talking beforehand, but perhaps I just wanted to ask, whether it's planning or your city attorney, will the ordinance moving forward include provisions that require any type of off-premise messaging that could be seen from the freeway to comply with, and state regulations, which would include N dot regulations, spacing size, et cetera?
John Riddell, Assistant City Attorney, for the record. Yes, the, the changes in municipal code still require conformance with all N R S, and particularly the N dot requirements for placement of signs adjacent to the freeways.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, seeing no other public comment, I will close public comment and pass it over to the commission. Commissioner DeSalvio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I dug into this one pretty deep, so to answer Ms. Lazovich's questions, N A C four-ten has those stipulations through N dot, where application process, and it has to be vetted, and the whole, from N R S four-ten three-twenty inclusive to four-ten three-fifty, pretty much covers that criteria of anything that's facing a major intersection or thoroughfare from N dot. With, knowing that this gives the ability, or at least opens the door for those with convention space along the freeway, I'm fine with it, because again, N dot has to have the final say, based on the application, if it's going to move forward or not. So with that, I, I support it, knowing that there's that caveat right there to, for the justification. So if there's no other comment, I'll entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item fifty-five twenty-five dash zero zero five five.
Any other comments? Commissioners Rogan or Kasama? Okay, hearing none. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Rogan.
I'm just a little bit confused by this. Is the only entity that this would apply to World Market Center?
Madam Chair, I, I think the, the.
Madam.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Madam Chair, through you, currently at this time, the City of Las Vegas, the only convention facility that we have active right now is the World Market Center. So yes, it would apply currently to them. Hopefully, we'd get more convention space in the future, but for right now, it would just be World Market.
And I would just add to that, Madam Chair, that the way the ordinance will be drafted is gener, it's, will be generally applicable to any convention facility that meets that definition under our code.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogan. Okay, seeing no other questions? Did, someone want to make a motion? Did you want to make the motion, Commissioner DeSalvio?
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item fifty-five twenty-five dash zero zero five five.
Great, great, thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama. Commissioner Rogan.
No.
Okay, please post. That motion does carry.
And that item will move on to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you very much. Next up, item fifty-six, twenty-five dash zero zero seven two T X T one, applicant, owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to amend L, L V M C nineteen point one two and nineteen point one eight regarding the condominium hotel use, and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. May we have the staff report?
Madam Chair, the purpose is to amend the hotel motel or hotel suites land use to consolidate the hotel motel and hotel suites use, and to establish the condominium hotel use. Currently, the hotel motel or hotel suite use allows for temporary lodging, with the only difference being that a hotel suites, that the hotel suites allows kitchen facilities or sitting rooms in addition to the sleeping room. To simplify, the proposed amendment will delete the hotel suites use, and combine it into the existing hotel motel land use category in order to streamline the approval process for these types of operators. The proposed condominium hotel use category combines traditional hotel accommodations with privately-owned condominium units that may be either owner-occupied or included for rent by the hotel operator, similar to a traditional hotel room. The building operates like a hotel, offering amenities such as housekeeping, front desk services, room service, concierge, fitness centers, spas, restaurants, and other services typically found in hotels. There are several such properties in neighboring jurisdictions, and this amendment will allow condominium hotels to be located within the City of Las Vegas to maintain regional consistency and economic competitiveness. Rental units will be required to be booked through this, the hotel operator, and cannot be rented by individual property owners for periods of less than thirty-one days. Staff recommends approval of this text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and turn it over to the commission. Commissioner DeSalvio.
So, just so I understand, the way it's drafted, it, it will protect from short-term rentals?
Madam Chair, through you, yes. This will not essentially turn into a building full of short-term rentals. These units will have to be offered as hotel rooms from a single operator, and not the individual condominium unit owners.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Kasama or Rogan?
I, I just had a comment. We should use them next in the county, I think upon place and others, and I think they work very well. So I'm very excited of the opportunity and the.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rogan. Commissioner Schlotman.
I'm ready to make a motion if there's no other comments.
Okay, please go ahead.
On item number fifty-six, two-five dash zero zero seven two T X T one, move to, move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama.
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Great, please, Commissioner Schlotman? Okay, please post. That motion carries.
And that will move on to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. And finally, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of time of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment under this item?
Yes, chairwoman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a hour-long speech, so I can win the over-under. Not really.
Not really? Well, I'm going to limit you to two minutes for your hour-long.
You did a, you did an excellent job with running the very smooth meeting tonight, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlotman. Okay, seeing no other comments, at a two-minute or hour-long duration, I will go ahead and adjourn our meeting.